Okay, I'd like to call to order the October sixteenth regular meeting of the Atherton City Council. Can we all raise for the pledge of allegiance? Rise, what did I say? So, the first order of business is I have the pleasure of reading a proclamation. I don't usually get to do a proclamation to one of my heroes. So Anna, would you like to come up here in the front? Yeah, we're gonna go down for a photo, but let me read the proclamation and then we'll, I'm sure everybody here will have something to add. And then we'll go down and take a photo if that's okay with you. Okay, so, Town of Atherton. Proclamation in recognition of Congresswoman Anna Eshoo for outstanding support of Atherton. Whereas the Congresswoman Eshoo, elected in nineteen ninety-two, was the first woman Democrat to represent California's sixteenth congressional district. In her career as a Congresswoman, her body of work includes more than sixty bills signed into law. And whereas Congresswoman Eshoo has lived in and supported the Atherton community, including working with at least seventy-one Atherton students through the Sixteenth Congressional District Student Advisory Board, Congressional Art Competition, and Congressional App Challenge. And whereas Congresswoman Eshoo has supported Atherton's sustainability efforts through green legislation, as well as working on over three hundred cases for Atherton residents. And whereas the Congresswoman has been a champion for Atherton and all of San Mateo County. She has celebrated important accomplishments, protect us in the face of disasters such as wildfires and floods, and helped the town secure needed funds for capital improvements for drainage and traffic support. Whereas Congresswoman Eshoo has worked to improve Atherton directly by electrifying Caltrain to improve air quality in Atherton and reduce airplane noise in the community, aided Atherton in securing millions in funding for much-needed flood mitigation improvements to the upper Atherton Canal. And whereas Congresswoman Eshoo has helped the town and Caltrans improve the traffic safety of Atherton along the Alameda-Dillis-Polkus and El Camino Real corridors by helping to raise the necessary funds for these improvements. Anna's secret sauce is that she has the skill of making everyone she interacts with feel special and listened to. Her passion for the youth in our communities has influenced us all for the better for the last thirty-five years. And now therefore, as the Mayor of the Town of Atherton and on behalf of the Atherton City Council, recognize the many contributions of Congresswoman noting that no one has worked harder for their constituents. The town will never be able to adequately thank her for all she has done for this jurisdiction. I hereby proclaim Congresswoman Anna Eshoo as an outstanding member of the Atherton community for both her work in the U.S. House of Representatives and in the Town of Atherton. Thank you, Anna.
Madam Mayor Benoulian, Vice Mayor Lewis, Councilmember DeGoya, Councilmember Widmer, and Councilmember Holland, thank you. That is a magnificent piece of work that you've put together. I don't think I deserve all these accolades. I wanted to come to say thank you to all of you because you and your predecessors have been extraordinary partners to me in public service. You know that I began at the Board of Supervisors. And so being in local government and county government, that's really what shaped me legislatively. And over all of those years, I've lived on Isabella Avenue. Atherton is is a place that is deeply set in the hearts of my family and my extended family. My children grew up at that home. They rode their bikes down the street over to Convent of the Sacred Heart. All of those, well, the neighbors that are still there are still very dear friends, as there are throughout town. So Atherton continues to be very special. I want to thank you for the leadership that you have demonstrated. This town and its leadership has, I think, always been known for being collaborative. And you know, the issues that we deal with are never easy. You now have this state mandate relative to housing. This is, this is an especially heavy charge and challenge for the Town of Atherton. But I have confidence in all of you. You know, in just coming up and into this beautiful building, I remember being in the old town hall building. And what you have done with this town center is nothing short of spectacular. It's a place that welcomes everyone. I love walking over here and getting that cup of coffee and the croissant. I had to, I had to stop making it so regularly because I needed to eat too many of them. But it's, and to have the library as one of the anchors of the town center is an eloquent statement about this place. So I am grateful to you. I'm grateful to the people of Atherton. I'm grateful to my constituents. Because thirty-two years in the House, I never dreamed I would be there that long. But one year after another, I always thought, two more years, I can get that much more done. And I've served, you know, the majority of my time in the Congress, I've served in the minority of the Congress. But I never thought of myself as being anything else but a full-fledged member of the Congress and that it was up to me to work with whomever would work with me in order to get bills to the five presidents that have signed my bills into law. So I'm proud of that bipartisan body of work. And, you know, and coming into your chambers, this is one of the tabernacles of democracy, right here. It's not top-down. This is where it all starts. This is where it all begins. And in my view, when we have strong communities in our country, we have a much stronger country. So as we're going through all the, you know, the campaign season and whatever, it's wonderful to see on the news people lining up at the polls to cast what has been given to us that is so sacred, the right to vote. And that in this chamber, you exercise the votes for the people of this magnificent place. So I thank you from the bottom of my heart. This is bittersweet for me. But as I said, I'm so grateful to all of my constituents throughout this very distinguished congressional district for placing their trust in me. That's a very big thing to say. I remember I asked someone years ago, they were sitting not too far away from me in a restaurant, and they said, "We always vote for you." And I don't know why, it just came out. I said, "And why do you always vote for me?" And they said, "We trust you." That's a sacred trust. You know that, we both share that. We both take the same oath to protect and defend the Constitution of the United States of America. So bless each one of you for your leadership, for seeing the town through the various chapters of what comes to you, to all of the staff here, to the police department. I think it's the best police department in the entire area, and I know people of the community prize it. And the administrative staff, your manager, your lawyers, everyone that's part of that team. I salute all of you. Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'm sure that every one of us up here is gonna wanna add our own little special thank you. So I know we have a lot of people here, but I'll try to be quick. I want to point out from all the local stuff you've done, there's also an amazing amount of national stuff. Anna's taken on the big battles, big topics like abortion, biodefense, campaign finance reform, energy policy, healthcare, human rights, immigration, infrastructure taxes, national security, and technology. So that's a pretty impressive list of all the things that she's done for us. And I will pick just one, because I could, we all could talk. As our Silicon Valley representative, I admired her leading efforts in technology. She took on spam, authorized electronic signatures, required local projects to include, road projects to include conduits to pave the way for broadband. She supported net neutrality and is a watchdog for the FCC. She acted as a co-chair of the Congressional Internet Caucus and Chair of the AI Caucus. She's named one of the most influential women in AI. She has led the way in the nation to prove, to provide technology guardrails and much-needed consumer safety. And I can go on, but I just wanted to pick at least one to say thank you. Thank you, you will be missed.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'm sure everyone, yeah, go ahead.
Well, there are lots of political things that could be said. But I'll say a personal thing, which is, nobody works harder for the people than Anna Eshoo. And Anna has taught me how to be a representative. Because that's what she holds in her highest esteem is a responsibility to those that have voted for her. And I've watched you take that incredibly seriously. When we had fires in San Mateo County, and you went throughout the county to where the first responders were and showed them your support. That was critical, and it was critical not just to the first responders, but it was critical to the constituents. That's why people trust you. They see what you do. And for me, you've taught me how to be a representative. And I consider being a representative the greatest obligation and honor that I have in sitting up here. And I try to implement that every day and being responsive to people. And you have taught that. Anna sends a letter every single week where she summarizes what is going on in Washington and how she is directly impacting it and the bills that she's working on or the issues she's working with. And it's so informative and so respectful that it's an honor to work with you. So, and that's a very personal statement.
So I will go next then. Anna, it's just been, for me, a wonderful privilege and honor to know you and to get to know you better over the years I've been on council. You have been a mentor to me in so many ways. And as Councilmember DeGoya indicate, your leadership style, your representative style of reaching out to constituents. But also, it is just exemplary. One of the things that I have found so moving is your passion for youth. And every year, the high school graduates who have decided to enter into the armed forces academies like West Point and Annapolis, she has them all for lunch and honoring them in the hangars over at Moffett Field. And all the brass come out, and it is so moving to me. And you've launched them into their life of service in the military. And so I just admire you so much.
Thank you.
I'll miss you.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Mayor Lewis, dear friend.
So Anna, you know, as I've introduced you a couple of times, I've always started out with a friend of Atherton, and you have been. You've listened to us every time we've needed to talk to you about an issue. You've made yourself available to you or to us. And, you know, of course, you're regularly available down at Sacred Heart on the weekends, which is very much appreciated as well. You know, people see you as a compassionate person, which is exactly what you are. You know, and you get to the root of things and you try and help. So without much further ado, and not repeating what other people have done, I've really appreciated working with you and respect everything you've done and appreciate everything you've done, not just for us at Atherton, but for this region. So, thank you very much, Anna.
Thank you very much, beautiful.
My turn. Well, I'm newer on the council, so we didn't get as much time to work together. So I can really more speak to my experience working with you as a constituent. During the early COVID shutdown days, you did an amazing job with doing your town halls, your virtual town halls, your telephone town halls. That was a really scary time, and you were able to give reliable, clear information, bringing in experts. And when we weren't feeling really great about what the government was doing, I felt really safe knowing that you were safeguarding our community and you were providing good information to everyone. And that was kind of part of my origin story for getting involved with the Town of Atherton government. So, you know, you planted a little seed into how to be a good partner, a public servant. So we're really gonna miss you. Successors have major shoes to fill, so.
Absolutely. Can we all go, come down and I want to take a photo?
She's, it's framed.
Oh, you got a frame though, look at that.
Very nice.
Very nice. I know, I'm a fan. Okay, all right. So this is, I'd like to open up to public comments. This portion of the meeting is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter not on the agenda that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. So do we have any public comment tonight? None in the room? Anthony, do we have any online? Okay, we'll move on to disclosure of ex parte communications. Anyone needs?
Yeah, I've talked to a number of residents around the housing issue. I mean, more than ten. And between this meeting and the last, including the owners at nine-nine-nine Ringwood.
Okay.
I've had a conversation with one of the owners on Frederick regarding the housing element.
I've had meetings with a number of residents, nine-nine-nine Ringwood, Fredericks, a whole bunch, let's put it that way, many. So go on.
I had a conversation yesterday with a couple of residents with regards to the roundabout discussion, as well as with the Bay Road item that we're gonna talk about.
I've talked to some residents about the housing element, including the Atherton Housing Coalition, and I've spoken to some residents about pickleball.
Pickleball?
Oh, wow, good for you.
Go figure. Okay. Next is the Departmental Written Reports.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Members of the council, you have the written report as part of your packet. It's also linked on the town's website. Staff's here to answer any questions the council might have. During one-on-ones, there was a few questions that were part of some of the administrative reports, which we answered during those one-on-ones. Other than that, any questions?
Do we have any questions?
No.
No questions?
I'd like to have the council decide if we could pull forward the roundabout discussion, as well as the pickleball discussion before we get into the housing, because that's been some request from some residents to me anyway. So if the council could consider that.
Can we see if there's people that are here for each of those? If there are, then I think it makes sense. They don't have to sit through the whole housing thing waiting for another item.
I see people, they have a lot of hands up. That's for the roundabout, right? That's roundabout. Anyone here for pickleball? Do we want to just move just the?
Anybody online?
Just to move up the roundabout.
The roundabout.
All right, so we'll just move the round, do we all agree?
I'm in agreement.
Okay, all right. So, well, let's start with that then.
Are we gonna do the consent agenda?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we'll do the consent agenda first.
Well, he did, he reviewed it for us, is anybody wanna?
I'll move, we approved items one through six in the consent agenda unless someone wants to pull something.
I'll second it.
We have to make sure there's no public comment on consent?
Public comment on this, on the consent agenda.
Is there any public comment on the consent agenda? None in the room, any online? None online, okay.
Okay. Roundabout.
Okay, so let's move to approve an amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Kimberly Horn and Associates, Inc. for the Alameda-Dillis-Polkus Traffic and Safety Improvements Project to include a roundabout at the Alameda-Dillis-Polkus-Atherton Ave intersection and to provide environmental support for the project. So we have Robert to give us a report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. When we entered in, when the council approved the agreement, the original agreement with Kimberly Horn, you asked staff to do, conduct a feasibility analysis on the round, on the potential of putting a roundabout at the Alameda-Atherton Ave intersection. The findings of that feasibility study were presented to you at the September fourth council study session, at which point you gave direction to staff to proceed with the roundabout. Following that direction, we reached out to our consulting team at Kimberly Horn to get a proposal for modifying the design to include the roundabout. And so what we have before you tonight is a request to approve a contract amendment with Kimberly Horn to integrate the roundabout, as well as to conduct the necessary environmental certain components of the environmental investigation that are required for the overall project, including the roundabout. The overall ask for the change is about two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand dollars, and that includes a credit of about sixty-seven thousand against the current scope of work. So with that, I'm available to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions?
I have a question, go ahead. Well, I mean, just basic math. What was the credit against the current agreement? Why was there a credit?
Because there are things that they haven't done and won't fully have to do. And so they are giving us a credit against the current contract in the amount of about sixty-seven thousand, which we can apply towards the change. So the overall change is around two-hundred-and-eighty. But with that credit, it reduces the extra funds that are required for the change.
And just to clarify, and of that additional two-hundred-and-thirteen, from the staff report, it looks like forty-three thousand, five-hundred-and-thirty-eight was going to have to be done anyway.
I think it's a little more than that.
This is the cultural resources and air quality.
Yeah, so there's forty-three, and then I think we had another ten thousand for additional environmental support. So about fifty-three thousand that we would have.
And that ten thousand is contingency essentially?
On the environmental, yeah.
Yeah, does that include, so you said that includes the contingency, the ten percent contingency?
No, it's a contingency for the environmental work because there are a certain amount of unknowns on the environmental requirements because they're a little bit greater, they, there is a potential that they're gonna be greater for the roundabout than we were gonna have for the signal. And so we just needed to have a little cushion for extra environmental support for the project.
So the two-twelve is, two-twelve-nine is two-twelve-nine? It's not gonna be two-twelve-nine plus ten percent or fifteen percent?
No, we're asking for basically two-hundred-and-thirteen thousand in terms of authorization for the city manager to execute the change.
Is it true at this point, we don't know how much the price difference is between the two projects overall?
I think that we presented at the feasibility, with the feasibility analysis and a rough estimate based on the conceptual design or the feasibility design. As we move through the actual design of the project, we'll have a better handle on what those numbers are.
So after you give back the response from this bid, we'll get a better?
Well, as we proceed through the design, we're gonna get an engineer's estimate of the work based on the design documents. And then the actual cost of work is always determined by contractors that bid on the project.
Okay, my question, pretty simple, is we're gonna, if we spend this money now, we don't know how much, I mean, we're kind of involved, I mean, we're kind of committed to doing this. And you don't switch horses after you get the design. So what would be the estimate that, you know, at the top of your head of what the total project would cost? As we are scoping it, as we are?
Well, if I recall, the estimate that we had for the project as originally outlined was around two and a half or so. And then we said that the extra cost associated with the roundabout was about another seven-fifty. So that is likely gonna change. You gave direction to staff to try and tweak the design, reduce certain components of it. And so that'll shave a little bit off. But these are, at this point, it's all guesswork, because we don't have a design yet.
Robert, there's been some, I guess, in the write-up plus the city manager's report, was that the timeframe is awful tight for getting this done. So what's your feeling on being able to meet this schedule? The city manager's report to us on Friday indicated that it would take us right up to the limit with no delays. And under those circumstances, unless the federal government was delaying us, then we might have a problem with the money. Is that correct, or is that not?
We are gonna do our best to beat the timeline. The consultant knows the urgency on getting this done timely. We have, we have a meeting scheduled for tomorrow after you approve the change with regards to things that can be expedited, as well as they have a suggestion that we may need to phase certain pieces of work so that we can get those federal funds obligated. And then things that we need to do, we may need to do kind of as a second step, if necessary, to meet the timeline.
We learned, so have we learned anything more about how, what the construction impacts would be? I know that was the thing that we talked about last time, but we didn't really know. But I know that topic came up.
We will have to phase construction. It is, you know, when you're doing something as the impacts are quite a bit different for doing a roundabout versus a traffic signal. But we will work to phase, phase the construction to minimize those impacts. And so, for example, it could be that we work on one side of the road, putting in curbing and stuff and widening each side separately before we do work in the middle to allow for better traffic flow. But again, it's all gonna be contingent on what the actual design is. We know that traffic is a really critical item, and that is a really heavy intersection. And so there are going to be impacts during construction. They're unavoidable, but we're gonna do our best to minimize those impacts. going to do our best to minimize those impacts.
I have a question about the federal grant. Is that exclusive to that intersection? We're also doing work to the Camino Alago?
It's for the entire corridor. And so when I say we can potentially phase work?
We could do those first.
It may be that we obligate the funds towards the, the Camino-Alago intersection and longitudinal improvements and maybe the exterior work on the roundabout and get that work out, get those funds obligated for that. Um, we're going to have to work cooperatively with Caltrans, who is the administrator on the federal funds, on how best to, uh, to coordinate that. Our, we, we need to get the funds obligated in time. And so we're going to work through strategies to do that.
Just a quick question. Can you refresh my memory about the amount of funds? Because I'm afraid we're going to run out of the funds.
In total, we have a $2 million grant. Um, we've already obligated certain funds for design. We can further ask for an augmentation based on, uh, these extra design costs so that we can obligate more of those federal dollars earlier.
Okay, there, okay, because, well, there, if there's more federal dollars than 2 million because we will need more than 2 million.
Well, the project is more than 2 million. The grant is 2 million. And so the money is available for the duration of the project, including project design. So we've already gone through a process to request funds for reimbursement of the project design. I think in the neighborhood of about 300,000.
But the maximum grant though, that we're awarded is 2 million.
That's correct.
The project costs are more than that.
It's all on the town.
Then what? That's on us?
That's on us.
Can we reduce the scope? I mean, it seems like it's a very large project. No?
I have a question. Um, in order to get the federal funds committed, is it correct that we don't have to have the work completed? We have to have engaged the parties that are going to need to be paid?
No. So the way that it works is you have to get basically approval before you can spend the money. And so they're going to authorize the construction dollars and we need to get that authorization before we enter into a construction contract. And so...
And once they approve that, then does that mean the, the funds are obligated?
That's correct.
So we don't have to have the, all the construction work finished?
No, we just need to get the design done and all of the ancillary things related to getting that approval done in advance. And so...
That's by next September?
By, by September. And so there is a time period required for that review process. So everything has to be done several months before that.
Was there a matching component to this money?
Yes.
So what was our share?
Uh, well, the minimum required match, I think, was around 20%, um, but the project is more than 20% more than the grant. So there's, we're not, um, I'm going to say, we're not contributing less than the match.
Okay.
There are public comments.
Okay. So if there's no more questions, I'd like to open the floor to public comment. So if you want to make a public comment, please come to the microphone and state your name. Yeah, come on up, whoever. Okay. Well, there's someone behind you, so come on up.
Thank you, council members. My first time doing this. I'll have to excuse if I have the order or anything incorrect. But, um, so my name is Raj Jain. I live at, uh, 326 Atherton, so very close to the roundabout. And, um, just kind of, uh, you know, I kind of comment on this. I've been there for 20-plus years is, um, you know, while I do believe roundabouts can be good in, in certain cases, I don't think in this case it makes sense. And, uh, you know, for a variety of reasons, um, one is definitely this, this cost, which I, seems fuzzier than even I had kind of from read from the agenda and from all the details. And there's already been some amount before it was going to go more, maybe then slightly less. And now we're talking about doing a, you know, a redesign of it. And so, and even if you looked at that proposal that they had, which I guess included the red line, it had maybe multiple options shaved down to one option. So it doesn't seem like there's an actual, you know, really known design out there. So it's going to be somewhat unknown. You're going to have this cost. Who knows where, where it's going to balloon. And before you know it, you're kind of committed all above this grant. And so it seems like a pretty slippery slope on the cost side. Uh, I'd also say on the safety side, um, you know, I, I have concerns. Um, just because of both the narrowness of the roundabout and roundabouts kind of in, in general, when people don't really know, uh, are familiar with them. You know, you'll have the autos and vans and that's something with the narrowness. I think the bikes will be the biggest issue. Being at that intersection, uh, you know, unfortunately, many bikers, uh, don't obey even the stop sign. Um, and you could say that's on them, but it ends up being on all of us. And a stoplight would mitigate it. I think a roundabout, you're going to have more people kind of just blowing through it with cars, uh, more confusion. Uh, and so I think there's, uh, going to be an increased risk of accidents. And then, you know, finally, I would just say the purpose of this is I know to, to reduce it, um, reduce, uh, traffic during these rush hours, but that's really non-resident traffic. And so why would we want to do more, uh, and just get more people to use it as a cut through? Um, I think a light would suffice and be a known quantity. Thank you for your time.
Come on up to the mic.
Hello, everyone. Um, my name is Laura Lauder. We live at 53 Atherton Avenue and, um, I am a cyclist. So I actually would like to speak in favor of the roundabout as a cyclist because I have biked all over the world, especially in Europe. And, uh, roundabouts in Europe, um, are much safer than, uh, than, than, um, uh, than, than situations with traffic lights, particularly for cyclists. Cyclists understand the idea of going through a roundabout very smoothly. And everyone is going relatively slowly, which is wonderful. Whereas with a light, people tend to go very quickly through a light with, um, with a green light. And so from my perspective, the safety issue is much better. Um, I think that there are also design concerns about this situation. And, um, I'm delighted that my husband Gary here has identified, um, ways to reduce the cost. And so I think that, that, uh, that he can address that issue as well. Um, there are a, a series of websites that describe how fatalities drop by 90%, injury accidents reduced by 75%, crashes roughly by half, 34, 30 to 40% reduction in pedestrian crashes, and single lane roundabouts are safer for bikers than traffic signals. And there are a, a series of sources for that. So with that, I'd like to.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Do we have any other comments? Oh, I see two people getting up. Oh, Gary, you wanted to go last. Someone else was getting up high. Everybody wants the last word. Well, is there anyone online, Anthony?
Arm wrestle for it.
Okay, all right.
Hi, I'm Suzanne Jane. I live at 326 Atherton Avenue, which is one house up from the intersection. This is my first time at the, at the council, so I hope I, I hope I know all the rules. I'm also a cyclist. I also have ridden around the world. I have a lot of concerns about the safety as a cyclist of getting around the roundabout. I've also lived in, in England, so I'm familiar with the roundabouts. I'm a Stanford alum. My son's going there. I'm at the roundabouts a lot. And I am terrified riding through those roundabouts. Um, you either have to be terrified and ride around them, or you have to get off the bike and go through them. And most bicyclists don't want to get off of their bikes. So, um, I have a lot of concerns about the safety. I have a lot of concerns about how we're going to get out of our property during the times that it's, um, it's crowded. That's not crowded very often, but when it is, and the cross through traffic is going all the time, I don't know how we're going to get out. I think we might have to go around to Fletcher and then we're, we're going around on these side streets. So, um, I think it's great for people who are passing through Atherton, but I think it's, it's a disservice to the people riding down, uh, driving and riding down Atherton Avenue. And I have a lot of concerns about the cost. It doesn't look like this is flushed out. It doesn't seem like there's enough room there. There's a lot of infrastructure there. There's a lot of phone lines. I know most people don't use phone lines anymore, but there are a lot of phone lines there. Some of us still do. There's a, there's a lot of infrastructure and very little space. Um, I think roundabouts are great in the right place. I don't think that this is one. I think a light would be a much simpler solution and we know how much it costs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Oh, one more person. Gary? Come on up.
Good evening, council. Pavi Ramamurthy, 302 Atherton. I think I was here at the last council meeting as well. So, um, I also have concerns similar to our neighbors on the roundabout. The one thing that I do want to call out is I don't think I've seen anything in the current agenda or packet on the revised design. Like, uh, my neighbor Raj Jain pointed out, the document attached came with a lot of red lines with no clear indication of what the new proposed design should be. And I raised the same concern before on wide turn vehicles with a splitter lane on all four lanes is going to cause, uh, especially with construction happening on Atherton Avenue with houses being constructed, it's going to create havoc and it's not going to be an easy, uh, in and out for us. And we are going to be the ones most affected. We are right at the corner. And with, uh, school, uh, children bicycling with new drivers for, at Woodside High, I'm not sure they're going to know how to navigate roundabout. Of course, things take time and they will eventually learn. But I do recall that from the last, uh, meeting that the roundabout, the center was going to be slightly raised. So during the nighttime, it's going to be really easy to just go right at it, um, head on. And I really don't think it's a safe option. So I vote a some. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else in the audience here?
Hi, um, my name is Gary Lauder. I live with Laura at, uh, 88 Mercedes Lane and 53 Atherton Avenue. And, um, so, um, I first want to just address some of the concerns that were raised. Um, uh, so regarding, um, the cost estimates from the prior packet, that included the moving of a PG and E pole, which is no longer necessary if the, if the roundabout has shrunk in size and/or if it's shifted to the north onto, uh, land that is owned by the, uh, by the city. Um, it also included a lot of sidewalks, which I don't know that are needed. And certainly if it's needed for the roundabout, would also be needed for the, um, traffic light. The, um, there's a way to dramatically reduce costs, um, by using, uh, technology that is sometimes called instant roundabout or modular roundabout, which, which have, uh, been installed in, in many places in less than a week. Um, and, uh, the, um, uh, they are dramatically safer, including for bicyclists. And, um, I sent you all, um, not, you read all the voluminous things I sent, but it, um, a, a link to, um, this, the source for the statistics about a, uh, single lane roundabouts being safer for bicyclists than, um, than regular, as well as pedestrians and so forth. Um, uh, the, um, let's see, also in, um, 2012, when I first started, um, publicly advocating for this, um, I sent, uh, um, an email to a lot of the Atherton residents whom I know. And, uh, 65 of them sent letters of support, uh, which I have also emailed you guys in a, in a PDF. Um, the, uh, and I, I just wanted, um, there's an important concept here, which is, um, to beware of comparing the cost of the safest roundabout to that of a traffic light because it could be that the safest, largest roundabout will be more expensive than a traffic light. But it'll be, um, if you compare the, um, the, the best roundabout that will fit without a lot of disruption, that will still be dramatically safer than a traffic light. So if, um, you know, the consultants, if the consultants are asked to give you the safest roundabout, then they'll give you something that may be oversized and too expensive. If you ask them for a compact roundabout that fits without moving the pole, that no eminent domain and so forth, you're likely to get, uh, something that is costing less than the, uh, a traffic light would cost. And, um, and also in light of the fact that you can shift it onto the land you own, that also alleviates the disruption during construction because much of that would happen off the existing road. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Anthony, do we have anyone online?
Sankesh, you have the opportunity to speak? Okay. Try. Ronjeev, you have the opportunity to speak?
All right. Thank you. Um, my name is Prakash Ramamurthy. I live in 302 Atherton Avenue. So a couple of things I wanted to, uh, call out. One, it is, it's not about the, uh, safety of roundabouts. It's about the knowledge of...
Yeah.
It is the knowledge of the, uh, high school kids who are trying to learn driving for the first time and their ability to navigate a roundabout the first time. Um, from my bedroom balcony, I have a good view of the traffic going up and down. I think the roundabout is actually going to make people speed even more and, um, and it's going to make life dangerous for everyone. Um, so, and for us who are sitting, who are living in the corner, it just makes it, makes me extremely nervous. And I think, uh, like my neighbor Raj said, for us to be able to enter from Atherton into Alameda is going to be far riskier than it would be with a straight up stoplight, which a lot of people know. I just came back from France, so I understand the concept of roundabout, but they are there every three feet. Uh, but if you look at it, for new drivers and even for, uh, seasoned drivers in the Bay Area, they're not exposed to the working of the roundabouts. And I see it's an overkill for what we need to solve for. Lastly, I'm a little bit confused on what is the cost and what is the roundabout we're talking about because the, the prior gentleman said something about a compact roundabout, an instant roundabout. So, but that's not what the packet says. So I'm a little bit confused about what is going to be the cost of it. And lastly, I'll leave you with one statistics. The California Air Quality Board says the number of EV vehicles in the San Medeiro County and in the city of Atherton is one of the highest in the country and it's continued to grow. So this being a pollution driver also seemed to be a little bit misplaced. Thank you.
Bianca, you have the floor?
Can I talk? I'm Rajiv Madhavam.
Yes, okay.
So I'm Rajiv Madhavam. I'm the owner of, uh, 297 Atherton Avenue and 225 Alameda-Dillas-Polcas. Two of the properties that are next to the roundabout. Uh, I've been living here since 1998 and this issue of roundabout keeps coming back every few years. We had, actually have had council meetings where lights, uh, were approved at some point, but we're back to the, to the question. At the end of it, we are doing this construction for, uh, traffic that's going on Alameda-Dillas-Polcas. That's not local traffic necessarily, but people crisscrossing. And there are four parameters we should build and look at these on. One is the space needed. Whatever people say about roundabout, roundabout will definitely take more space than a light. Now, if you reduce the size and you make the size very small, like Stanford has done, then everybody just go to the Stanford turnabout, sit for 15 minutes, you will find that people are going through the curb and hitting the side again and again. So space, a roundabouts absolutely takes most times. Bike traffic and the effect of bike traffic, the studies that I've seen on roundabout are very, very, very incorrect. And I have five videos which actually look into the space. I've had nobody come and ask me for the study, but it's very clear bikes do not hit the stop at that corner. Now, if you allow a roundabout and people have to come into the main line and change back, it is going to cause much more accidents. So from a fundamental space and efficiency perspective, there is no, these are two of the things that needs to be done. I don't see any benefit. From a time to implement this, definitely I cannot see a roundabout taking less than putting a traffic light today and... and make it, you know, work. And from a cost, from what I've seen, there is no fixed numbers on the roundabout. We know what it costs for a light. And the only advantage that I've seen in the roundabout is that people will pass the light in trying to cross when it's a yellow. Well, we can fix that with a camera system that actually tickets the violators and catches them. So I think on space, ease of deployment, cost, efficiency, all of these things, I do not think that this solution requires a roundabout. And given at least one more light being built further down near the school, I know we've been talking about that, it's easy to time that light and this light to allow through traffic to do a much faster path than what can be done with a roundabout.
About 30 seconds, sir.
Pardon?
You have about 30 seconds left.
Yeah, so essentially, in my view, we are wasting a lot of dollars in terms of this research, when a lot of discussions on the light have happened and a light with a camera system will be much more effective. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There's no one else on mine. The other person.
There's no, anyone else in the room? No one else in the room? All right, so I want to turn it back to the council.
Close public. Sorry? Close public comment.
I'm closing public comment. I'm turning it back to the council.
There you go. I'll go. Couple of things. I too, since everybody's saying they've been in Europe and everything like that, I lived and rode bikes in Europe for 14 years. I know about roundabouts in both England and France. And they work very well over there. I'm not going to say that they don't. They have many roundabouts. They have large roundabouts. They have roundabouts that have lights on them because in a very busy intersection, you always have to wait for the guy coming, in their case, in England, on your right, but here be on your left. And so people are coming down the Alameda, you're going to have to wait before you can enter onto the freeway because they have the right of way. And so where that's the problem that we have today is the people on Alameda are coming in very heavy traffic and the people on Atherton Ave will be able to get out as easily as if there was a light. So I think that actually, now I voted for this on the last time because it was going to be the same price. It's not the same price anymore. Plus, there's that issue of we got a timetable issue. So I'm not for it. I also believe, as I pointed out at that time, the way that the original design that we saw that was presented, which, you know, now may be getting revised, you know, bicyclists were going to have to exit, go over, up to, up a little bit on Atherton Ave, then cut over on a walkway and then get back on the bike and then either go forward or go out to the next turn as well. That's very cumbersome. And by the way, people on bikes are not going to do that. They're going to go straight through. And I think that that creates a dangerous situation. So I think that, yes, roundabouts are great for cars, but I do not believe that they're safe for bicyclists. I brought this up at the last meeting. And the only reason I supported it was because it was going to be done at the same price and it was a four to one vote if I had said no. But I think now it costs more money and because of the dangers and because I don't think this is going to benefit Atherton residents who live on Atherton Ave, it's going to benefit the cut through traffic, which is what I also brought up last time we looked at this. And so my position on this is to not do it and go back to the light. Thank you very much for listening. I'm not going to change my mind.
Anything else?
I think I'm, I'm struggling with this one because I think this is going really fast because of this grant. And what we're being asked right now is to come up with a design because we don't have a design. The thing we looked at before was a feasibility study on whether or not it would work in the intersection, which is very different from an actual design. And from what I understand for us to, and I think a roundabout is a good idea, but I think there, we need to have a design and do the outreach and do it right. And I'm worried that the speed at which we have to keep our funding is going to have us skip some necessary oversight and public outreach. And so I'm, I'm, I'm going back and forth on it. Because I think a roundabout, if done well, would be good. But without the Transportation Committee being able to weigh in the design, having, you know, having us look at design, all of that, those steps, it just makes me a little bit nervous. So I'm not, I'm kind of going back and forth on how I feel about it. So I'd love to hear what the rest of the council has to say.
You want to go?
No.
Sure, okay. I'll say what I think. The reason that I felt attracted to a roundabout is I live very close to the intersection. I'm on that intersection several times a day, every day. And I find that during rush hour, that intersection is very difficult to navigate because the cars back up in the afternoon to Camino Alago and in the morning to Stockbridge with people coming to the stop sign. And a roundabout would enable those cars to move much more efficiently through that intersection. There's two concerns that I've had. One is with, I guess there's three concerns, I would say. One is with traffic that comes into the intersection from Atherton Avenue, which is how I approach the intersection. And I've been concerned from when this first got raised, how that traffic would manage during those rush hours when the traffic flow is constant coming along Alameda. And I've looked at that. I've looked at it with other roundabouts. I've driven around and I think it's manageable. I think people slow down and I haven't had the experience where you get locked out. I find that in my experience in roundabouts, people are pretty polite. And while it's not like a stop sign where you alternate exactly, people let you in. The other thing that I've been very concerned about was the traffic light that will be moved to Camino Alago. Because if, in fact, cars backed up at that traffic light as they are going south, if they backed up enough, they could come to the Atherton Avenue. If there's a roundabout there, that would be a problem. But I've been convinced by the staff that that can be managed by managing the light at Camino Alago, which I believe is true. And the third area of concern for me was the bicyclists. And I've talked to the police at Stanford and I've observed the, how bicyclists manage the roundabouts at Stanford, where there's plenty of bicyclists and there's quite a good number of roundabouts and it hasn't been a problem there. So I frankly don't feel that concerned about that. So I come down that it seems to me that the roundabout would be a better solution. The timing in terms of the grant is something that I've been concerned about. But it's, what I understand is we need to get the design done and the construction contracts committed in order to secure that grant money. The project doesn't have to be done. Those construction activities don't have to have been completed. They have to be engaged where the federal government authorizes the money for that. And it's going to be, this project is more than $2 million. Whether it's a roundabout or a traffic signal, it doesn't matter. It's going to be quite a bit more than $2 million, somewhere in the next million range. And that's what we bought into. This is an important improvement for us in Atherton. It's an important improvement. It's true that most of the cars coming down Alameda are not Atherton residents, but they're coming through our town. This is a road that we have responsibility for. So I think we should make it as efficient as we can. So it seems like a good idea to me, but I'm glad we're going to do something with the intersection.
Okay. So I've always been a really big proponent, proponent of a roundabout. You know, I've seen them in Europe like everyone else. I see them at Stanford University. And I think they work really, really well in a lot of situations. We have a difficult intersection, I think. And to fit it all in the way it's supposed to fit, and we've always said, well, could we move it more north to that other little area that Gary alluded to that we own and kind of make it so that we're not having to encroach on other people's property? I don't know what this design is right now, but I'd like to see it. My concerns are the feedback that we're getting from the immediate neighbors. When we held the workshop about the roundabouts last July, there were people that were giving their opinion and there were neighbors who were saying, no, we don't want a traffic light because of the light pollution and the sound pollution with the little, you know, you have to push to activate the crosswalk, you know? Walk, walk. No, don't walk, don't walk. That they would now be hearing in their neighborhood or whatever that is and just the whole infrastructure of that. So I thought, you know, these people really don't want a stoplight. I have not heard from these people. Now, now all I'm hearing is that the neighbors want a stoplight. They do not want a roundabout. I think, I think, not to say that anything that they're experiencing, but I think that the plan has not been well articulated. It hasn't been well laid out, just like Councilmember Holland said. You know, we don't have a plan that we can look at and study and say, okay, well, here's the traffic flow and how that's going to be. Honestly, I think bicyclists can take care of themselves. They should not be blasting through stoplights. They shouldn't be. And I see them doing that. Even if there is a four-way stoplight, they'll blast through without any care about stopping and being cautious. They'll figure out a way. I don't think that the design that we talked about, having them go up Atherton Avenue and across a crosswalk to make it to the other side is reasonable. As far as people not being able to get out of their driveway, if there's backups, we talked about how that could be mitigated by putting "don't block" signs, you know, "don't block this area." We've got those all over town. So that when traffic does back up, that you can get onto the street from a side street. You can get out of your driveway from the driveway. So I, I'm a little disenchanted right now with the roundabout. And I think it has to do with the process because we don't have a plan. And, and once we approve this money to be spent for the Kimberley Horn valuation, we're really committed because that will start the clock ticking for going down the road and we will not have time to change horses and go with a stoplight. We've, we've got an opportunity now. You know, if everyone feels that this is an uncertain situation, to stop this process, stop the cost and make a transition to either do nothing at the intersection and keep it the way it is or, you know, install a stoplight, a regular flashing light and put the money someplace else, up the Alameda corridor, because that's what it's designated for, right? The grant is, I'm a little unclear about that. Could we use it someplace else?
We're going to be spending more than the grant amount, so.
Yeah.
It's kind of irrelevant where the money would be allocated.
Got it. Okay. So I'm still noodling on it all.
Yeah, I would say what's been confusing for me is that we're hearing both sides on the safety issue. We've had two traffic studies of the area. And the traffic studies have come up not really supporting either one, but saying they're about the same. Is that correct? Am I getting that right? So that was baffling to me because there's a lot of research on roundabouts in general as being more safe. So that, there's a mountain of information there. So as a layperson, I am not a traffic expert. I don't know what to do other than to listen to our traffic experts and study the reports. I also am troubled by the timeframe of all this. And if it were up to me, I would have put in the first light in up by the school and see what that does to the traffic pattern and then make a decision on phase two to be this light. I don't know if at this point we can still change or where we are with stuff, but it would be interesting if putting that light up there solves 50% of the problem or changes the pattern and makes us want to consider something different. I just don't know. And it seems to me a traffic study, again, I'm a layperson, I don't know about this, but it would seem like that and then the lights on the other end, how the, how the traffic comes down can be, you know, really impacted by that one light. So I'm still stumped and I don't know which way to go on this one.
We have to make a decision tonight on this.
I'll make a motion that we approve an amendment to the professional services agreement with Kimberly Horn and approve the increase in the budget by $212,993.60.
Can I make a, I have an edit that I want added to the bare scope of work, if you don't mind. It's in Task 8.2, the concept refinement, where it outlines all the bullets of what exactly we're asking them to do. And one of the things that is not specifically noted that I would like in writing is that they pay a lot of attention on driveway access for those neighbors. Because that concept that was more of a, can it fit? Blocked, made it difficult to turn left out of a lot of those driveways. And we were all very unhappy with that in our last meeting. So I just want that, like specifically in writing, that their job is to make sure that those neighbors can turn left and right out of there.
Yeah, you're, you're saying in the,
It's the section.
Exhibit A.
Task 8.2.
Concept refinement. It's $18,000.
$250.
Right. And what are you wanting to say?
Well, so it's in their contract.
Yeah, they have a write-up on it.
Yeah, so they have a bulleted list of all their, what their job is, what we're asking them to do. And I don't want it to be forgotten that driveway access is important.
Can I ask one last stupid question before we vote on something? If we go into the design phase on this and we get a concrete design, as you said, now we're done. We can't go back and revisit. Is that literally true or will we be out the design stuff? Because the, some portions of it overlap. The environmental stuff overlaps. So what would happen if we do the design work and then we realize that it's wonderful? Or if we realize it's awful and we want to go back? Are we done?
I asked George that same question. He said, you know, you're kind of
You're stuck.
committed at that point because of the timing. Because, because it's going to take Kimberley, Kimberley, Kimberley Horn, how many months to do this? Like three to six months?
I don't know. That's what Robert's meeting is tomorrow, to meet with them about the timeline. But maybe you could express what happens if they do the PS and E and then you change it.
So as I indicated earlier in, when you're asking questions, we have a deadline for meeting the grant obligation. We are spending more money on the complete project than the grant requires. But part of that scope means improvements to that, includes improvements to that intersection. We can theoretically phase work so that we do some work at that intersection. But if you're asking for multiple designs, meaning give me both, then there's more money involved than just the $213,000.
What if we were to fund the other light first out of that money and start the production on that while we slow this one down so that we can get more?
Not just the other light. There's also Stockbridge.
Well, the Stockbridge improvements are funded separately. Those aren't included in the grant. We want to get those done. That design is 95% done and it's, we're working with the county and Inner West to get that project finished. But as part of the project also includes restriping of the roadway to put in bike lane buffers for the bike lanes and other general safety improvements along the route. lane buffers for the bike lanes and other general safety improvements along the route.
That was the basic grant.
That's in the basic grant. So the concern I have is we go one way and then, and we're going to get a, we're going to get a conceptual design and we're happy to share that. But that's going to be the general direction that we're going. And so we will have a limited amount of time to provide feedback on that, that conceptual and look at things like driveway access, the length of the, the length and type of splitter islands, what, where those crossing improvements might be and are we truly avoiding the, the utility conflicts? But I don't have an either or option unless you want both designed. But it messes with the environmental process because that means that you have to get the environmental process done for both designs.
Is there any reason we couldn't make it a two-phase project where phase one is completion of the light, where we already know what we're doing? It's all, everyone's on board. We do the light first.
Down at the Alago.
The other light.
I, I understand. We can do, I'm going to say, we.
There, there's a couple of challenges with that. If it's, there's, because Rose Robert indicated, there's more to the project than just the light at Camino Alago. If you're designing bicycle lanes and crosswalks as part of the entire project, they're designed entirely different for the roundabout as they are for the traffic signal at that particular intersection. So you can't bid a phased project with two different designs for an intersection because you won't be able to do that part of the project.
Well, I got to understand that. Now, you're saying to me that if you are, you're making a bicycle trail that's going to lead up. I agree with you, once you get to the actual intersection, but how can the trail going up be different not for one than any other?
The lead up to the intersection requires geometric changes, changing of where the curb on the side is for the roundabout. You're pushing the sides of the road out. And so your bike lane now at the intersection, it is, I mean, the intersection right now is oddly shaped where people are making the, the swoops at the intersection. As part of the overall, overall project, we want to make it better. Okay? And so whether it's a traffic light which has less curb work or you're doing the roundabout, you're actually going to make adjustments in where that bike lane is, where the traffic lanes are with the, the traffic signal, the concept, we're removing the, I call it the pork chop island for the right turn. And you're pushing every, you're having everybody at the intersection and make a, a more proper turn at the corner, which is a little safer than that, that swoop turn.
Robert, you're doing a really great job trying to paint the pictures in the, in the air, but you know.
I'm sorry.
Yeah. It's okay.
And so it, it's, there, the improvements go, in either case, go 100, 200 feet away from the actual intersection because we have to account for the lead up to that intersection.
And it, it would be made even worse in terms of a distinct difference between the two because the signal would be at that intersection with some minor changes. But if you're pushing that roundabout into our right-of-way area, that little corner beyond the pork chop, as Gary indicated, that we own, you're totally changing where things are.
But I agree with you on that intersection, but I still am not getting a concrete answer about why we couldn't do it in two phases where we do the whole entire other light and we do all the stuff leading up. I agree that once we get near that intersection, we need to know what we're doing. So I'm, I'm just wondering if, and we're being forced to make a decision without a design, without, you know.
Well, what we're asking for is to prepare the design.
Yeah, and it's just going to be lost money. It's going to be sunk cost. This is sunk cost.
How much is just the design part that we're going to lose if we, let's?
No, no, it's all, it's all, it's all part of it.
This isn't the construction. This is just.
Just the design.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So we'd be, we'd be out the 200 that's on the table.
If we don't go forward with this.
The federal government's going to pay for the design, right? I mean, we're going to, we're going to put everything up to the federal government to pay for until we run out of federal government money and then we're going to pay.
They're not going to pay all of it, but they'll pay a good chunk of it.
Right. But we may have to, yeah.
I guess what I'm trying to get at, and I don't feel I'm getting an answer, is that we're making a decision without all the information. And is there a way to phase the thing so that we don't bring it to a screeching halt? But instead we do the pieces we actually know, we get them started and that buys us a little bit of time to figure some of this out and get consensus.
Well, let's, let's pretend we can do that, okay? Let's just kind of work through that because to go down to the Camino Alago intersection, we've got to create a design for that light, stoplight.
And that's already happening.
We've already got that.
We don't have it yet. They are working on it. That's 65% design for, I'll call it the things away from the intersection is due to us by the end of the month.
End of the month.
So the rest of the project is moving forward. This is really a critical aspect.
Kind of getting your.
And so.
When would construction start on that?
This is all one project right now. Okay? And so keep in mind that if you are going to phase the project, you're in essence saying, okay, I need a second design contract, I need a second construction contract. The Fed process is going to pay for one of those. The town is going to end up paying for the second one.
But we're going to have to pay some money anyway.
Yeah, but you're going to pay more for having two projects than you would have in one.
We're already paying more for having this project than the other project.
And the other item I'm going to highlight is your biggest traffic issue is at the Atherton Avenue intersection. It's not at the Camino. The improvements are really needed at Camino Alago, safety at the school. And so it's really important that we get that done. But if you're talking about traffic problem, your traffic problem is at Atherton Avenue. And so if you phase this and push it off, then you're not solving the traffic problem.
I guess I'm just having a hard time making a decision with so many unknowns.
She seconded with, with the modification.
I made a modification, so.
You seconded? Which I accepted.
Yeah, so I, I, let me, I'm going to speak now. I think I'm in favor of seeing a design of the roundabout. I think what we're all having a hard time is that you feel like we're getting on a runaway train and that we're not, there's no, it doesn't seem like there are built-in check-in points because we won't have enough time. So I'm wondering if there are, can we build in something with the understanding we can't make massive changes to a design, but to have us look at it? Because the last feasibility design we saw was bad for a lot of, had a lot of problems with it and it's making us nervous. And so I'm wondering, is there a checkpoint that we could have? Is my question.
So we can share through one-on-ones and through other things, that concept design. What we don't have time for is full-blown public outreach again and adding a three-month interactive process with the public. We don't have that time. We're at the point now that we need to pick a direction, move. We're happy to share the concepts of the, the roundabout and the information that we have for what the traffic signal intersection looks like.
And the, the council needs to approve the final bid package.
Yes.
Which includes the design.
Which we won't get until March.
You'll, you'll see the concepts as soon as we produce them.
Could we ensure that the transportation committee looks at it? Or something like that, where they have publicly noted regular meetings? Can we put it on agenda? I don't know.
I'm going to say we can bring it. The problem is, is that they meet every other month. And the noticing requirements and all of that is time.
I think it's the council that has to.
I'd rather bring it to the council.
Just bring it right to the council.
It's kind of stupid then.
Just talking about it, I'd rather bring it to, I, I, I agree with both of what both of you said. I mean, I think the best solution would be a phased approach, but it doesn't look like we can have that. But I also think that if, when this design comes in, is shared with us, if it's as crappy as the last design was, we can just say, forget it. And yes, it's going to cost us money to say, forget it and to go back to a light. But I would do that. I don't want to do the wrong thing. The, the most important thing is that we do the right thing.
As I said, I mean, in terms of timeline, as I indicated before, we may actually have to phase certain pieces just to get that general obligation. But following, what I'm hearing is that when, if this change is approved, I'll talk to the design consultant, we'll add the comment about access for driveways as requested.
Which we brought up at the last meeting. I think everybody agreed protecting those residents that are around that.
Tweaking the alignment, shifting it forward, those are all things that we got from you at the last meeting. And so that'll happen. We'll include getting that concept to you in some manner for you to take a look at it and provide some feedback within the limited window that we're going to have. And then we'll, we'll take it from there.
So there's a motion on the table with the, with an amendment to it. Do you want to second it?
You can second it.
She's going to second that.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye. No.
Yeah. I want to abstain because I don't feel like I have enough.
So she's abstaining.
So what does that do?
Three, one and zero. Let's move on.
Three, one, one.
Three, one, one.
Three, one and zero.
No, zero is abstaining. Three, one, one.
A one abstain.
All you need is three votes. Let's move on.
Three, one, one makes five.
We've got a big issue in front of us. I don't want to be here another seven hours.
Okay.
And don't, don't add so much to the meeting.
No, we're not doing pickleball now. We're now going to go. I'm sorry, Robert, I didn't hear that.
Said, I think we have a couple of folks online for pickleball as well.
We didn't move it up.
We didn't move it up at the beginning, do we?
Because we asked, is anybody here for pickleball? And everybody said no.
Well, that's because they weren't going to.
Move on.
Are we going on to pickleball? Are we going on to what we originally intended? We're going to open the public, the public meeting now. Public hearing, sorry.
Yeah, we're on item seven. Is that right?
Yes. Yes, we're going to open the public hearing on item seven, consideration of resolutions regarding adoption of an initial study and mitigated negative declaration and mitigation and monitoring reporting program and amendments to the Atherton general plan and second reading of the ordinance to amend the Atherton municipal code to implement the 2023, 2030 housing element and zoning code updates. We have a report by Brittany.
Good evening, council members.
Can people hear you? Can we?
Can you hear me?
I, you're, can you turn her up a little bit?
We had this problem last time.
Town planner Brittany Bendix. I'll just talk a little louder. I'm not hearing myself in the mic either. Mona, can you hear me? Oh, okay.
I can hear you online, thank you.
So one moment while we bring up the slides and then we'll get started. All right, we can go ahead and skip to the agenda for the presentation. So first I'll go over the purpose of the meeting and remind you what actions we're here to take tonight. Then I'll cover the general plan updates, which includes any updates to the housing element as that's part of the general plan. Then I'll move on to the zoning code and map amendments, which really focus on the changes to the development standards for RM 10, 20 and 40, as we discussed at the council meeting on October 2nd. And then we'll move forward with the final recommendations by staff. Next slide. So tonight you're here to consider and adopt a number of documents that ultimately implement the housing element and zoning code updates. This includes the initial study and mitigated negative declaration that has had no changes since it was published for the September 18th meeting. Then we have revisions to the 2023 and 2031 housing element that has received some revisions since the October 2nd meeting. And I'll run through some of the comments that I've received from council members at a high level. Then we have the supporting general plan text amendments. Again, no changes since the September 18th publication. Moving on from that, supporting municipal code text amendments, again revised per October 2nd direction. And then finally, we have the supporting zoning map amendment with no changes seen since September 18th. And throughout those, that really reflects three actions that you need to take, a resolution for CEQA, a resolution on the general plan amendments, and then the second reading and adoption of the ordinance to the changes to the Atherton municipal code. Next slide. So what I've done here is I've identified all of the areas in the housing element text that we called out in the staff report as changed since the October 2nd meeting. The ones that I've highlighted here in orange have additional changes that I want to raise tonight as generally minor in nature. Next slide.
Sorry, additional changes subsequent to the October 2nd meeting?
Yes. So the first one is relative to the graphics that we added for the SB 9 subdivision analysis that we provided. One of the council members pointed out that the way that we delineated the lot splits in these graphics didn't reflect the 40/60 lot split that would actually be required. So that's one of the things we'll be changing when we go through and cleaning up these graphics. Next slide. The next topic we have is highlighting the sites on Bay, Bay Road and Ringwood Avenue and whether or not those are going to be included in the housing element. So that pertains to section 3.421 and the RM 10 overlay, but that would also affect the zoning map if those sites were removed at this point. Next slide. One of the tables in the housing element was brought to my attention as needing updates that would correlate to the zoning code amendments that are adopted tonight. I have highlighted here all of the areas that would change. So for example, this, this table summarizes all of the land use controls that are part of the housing element zoning code update. It lists R1A as existing, but then for, as reference, but then it includes a column for RM 10, RM 20 and RM 40 zoning standards with front, side, rear setbacks, the maximum height allowed, lot coverage, parking requirements, ministerial review is actually needing to be updated for R1A because for the most part, those are all principally permitted developments. And then I have cleanup to do in the setback, sorry, the footnote section.
People know that there's handouts that they can look at. Are there handouts for them? Yeah. Right. But I think you have handouts and it's on page eight.
Yeah, they're saying they can.
The only point of raising this table is that it needs to be updated to be reconciled with whatever gets adopted tonight. So the actual numbers are not reflective of what's in the development standards. They're highlighted here as the cells that are going to change in the table.
So the ones in yellow are wrong?
Correct.
Got it.
Based on our previous meeting?
Based on what was provided at the October 2nd and subsequent hearings.
Okay, so it just didn't get updated from the October 2nd.
Exactly.
The people who are not listening, the ones in yellow are incorrect, is what her point is.
They're in the municipal code.
But we're not going to debate them all over again.
And are they in our?
So one of the reasons that we haven't updated the housing element every time we've had a hearing and received further direction is because it means that we would have to print it. So at this point, we're going to update it one last time after the adoption meeting to cover everything that's changed here tonight as well as in the zoning code updates.
Are we going to see this revised table before it's submitted to the housing authority?
No, because it's just, it's just a summary of what you're approving in the zoning code.
Well, but we're, we're approving all of the actual code.
I, I don't know how we can approve it if we, we, we can approve it subject to review.
This table does not provide. This table does not provide any facilitation to development. It's a summary of what's in your adopted zoning code.
We approved all this stuff last, on October 2nd, okay? We, we approved all of that stuff. Maybe you could just reiterate what they were.
Well, we'll be going through the development standards.
I don't want to be sitting here until 11 o'clock at night debating again what we already debated on October 2nd. And I don't want to, you know, come in here tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock at night to reread what she gave us and give her another opinion. We got to get this thing out tomorrow.
Okay, so I just have a question through the mayor. In this little handout you gave us, it's a section 3.511 land use controls. In our binder, in our packet that was provided for us, there were summaries of everything that we had talked about.
Yes.
That section is not in our staff report.
Correct.
Oh, okay.
This was identified as something from a council member, DeGolia, as needing to be updated to reflect what's.
That we need to update it.
What's adopted tonight.
Okay.
So, I think that's fine. I mean, I know that's, that's the.
That's what we have to do.
But I do think that if we're submitting this table as part of the housing element before it actually gets shipped off, we should have an opportunity to look at it. That's important.
Are you saying you would like that at an additional public hearing or public meeting?
No.
Or just shared with you?
I can, we can come in tomorrow and look at it.
Whenever it's updated.
We've got to send this off right away. We understand that.
Okay.
And, and I understand what Brittany's saying, which is this is just a table that reflects content that we're deciding separately, no problem. But the table is going to be revised after this meeting. And I just think that it's appropriate that we have an opportunity, if we wish to, to look at it before it's submitted.
That, that's absolutely, I was taking your comments.
That's all I'm saying.
So one thing that my colleague Asher Cohen is sharing with me is that the document has to be published for seven days before we can submit it to HCD. So the key thing tonight is adoption. And knowing that that has occurred, but then it will be published for seven days before we can submit it.
Okay. Okay. That makes it easier.
Yeah.
Because all the rest of it are in here.
Just want to like repeat to everyone because I see everyone taking pictures of this grid on the screen. So what we have discussed is that this table is incorrect. So all the yellow cells that you guys are now reading are wrong. And she's going to fix it later. So I see you all trying to read it in a great detail. And that's not, there's a lot of detail you can't, you should be reading. This is not worth your time because this is wrong, is the point.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yeah.
Okay.
Next slide.
3.8.
Next slide, right?
3.8, yeah.
So this is another issue that has been raised by a council member relating to the program for the Gilmore House. There's two issues here. One is relating to the language about promoting housing development and whether or not it could be considered versus more strengthened. We've actually received feedback from HCD that consider isn't enough. Right now it says promote housing development. So I don't necessarily think that that needs to change because that's still a positive action. It's not as gray as consider. But one suggestion could be to acknowledge that the next step is moving forward with a feasibility study, although that's already called out in a bullet point. So just raising that in case there's any additional clarification that council members want to add here. Similarly, I have had a request to revisit the number of units. There was a discussion on whether or not we even needed a number referenced in this program. And I've been told that HCD's comments on other recent submittals has been requesting for further numeric analysis. So at this point, I wouldn't recommend dropping a number entirely.
Okay.
But if you didn't have a number, the assumption would be the 10 for which it's zoned.
It's nine because it's not.
Well, nine, yeah, because it's not a full acre, but it's zoned at 10 per acre. So if you didn't include a number there, the assumption would be up, at least up to the number of what was allowed.
However, that is not what council wants to do. That we want to limit under the.
Up to, up to four.
Up to four.
At this point, it's Q and A because you haven't done public comment yet.
So I'm flagging this for questions for future, for those wanting to provide public comment as something I anticipate coming up when we have further discussion on this item.
Yeah, I too would like to discuss this one.
Yes.
Just to be clear, the language solicit proposals and conduct a feasibility study will include doing the in-depth legal review to be confident that we that if we do develop up to four housing units, we won't lose the property to the trustees of Stanford University like the deed says we will.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great.
Next slide. So now I'm moving on to the zoning code amendments. The top is in black. I've not touched, but I do have slides on the topics I've highlighted here in orange. Next slide. And just as a backup, this is specific to RM 10 only right now. So the first thing was there was a reference to R1B in the RM 10 description and the characteristic of the district. So we're removing that. There, and then there are a number of issues related to setbacks. One, the first one is a typo. It says there's a reference to height above 30 feet, but we had discussed shifting that to 28 feet. That will be changed and corrected. The next one gets to this discussion of the shift of the 10-foot rear setback to the front setback. The discussion by the council on October 2nd really focused on that as a tool to address 23 Oakwood. And the way that it's been articulated in the development standards that are before you are universal. And that has some implications into the massing at the front that I think we've seen identified in some public comment since the October 2nd meeting. And so one thing that would be helpful is clarifying if that 10-foot adjustment should even apply universally or if the intent was only to have it applied to 23 Oakwood and thereby the more narrower sites on the rear yard table. So that's one thing I've, I'd like to get some clarification and direction on council. And another topic is related to the intervals in the rear yard table. The upper end is 50 and the lower end, we, we discussed at some extent being either 25 or 35. And then staff was asked to go back and modify the intervals in between. So I'm going to shift to the, can you shift to the next slide, Anthony, please? There's been a request that this be adjusted by one foot so that it more accurately aligns with the table for the minimum side yard, which is 38 feet, 36 feet, 34 feet, 42. And so this way you're only shifting by 10 feet instead of nine between the, the table differences. Next slide.
I'm sorry, can you explain this a little bit better? Can you go back? I'm sorry, I, I didn't understand what you're saying. Adjacent, is you're talking about the adjacent, you had the side yards?
Just the.
And the standard is the front or the back or what do we?
So we're talking about the rear yard requirement.
These are all the year, okay.
Just shifting that so that it aligns better with how the intervals are structured in the side yard.
Okay.
So in the side yard table, it's 40 feet at the upper limit and then 38 feet and 36 feet and 34 and 32 and so on. And so this recognizes that while the upper limit is 50 here, where it was 40 on the last table, so the intervals working down are just consistently 10 off.
They just did nine feet rather than 10 feet. So I said they should be the same.
Did you have any questions? Are you ready? Okay. Next slide, please. So these are the last two zoning code topics that I have for you. They both relate to these extra sections that we were asked to add as part of the October 2nd discussion. The first one relates to underground parking requirements. And there was a request that it be corrected so that the perimeter restrictions, so the, the restrictions on the extent of the below grade area should apply to all basement development. And right now it's written as though it only applies to below grade parking.
Okay, yeah.
So that seemed logical, but then it begs the question of, is this section really only related to underground parking requirements? Or should it be modified to address RM 10 basement requirements?
Well, I thought when we discussed that, when we discussed it, maybe I'm wrong. It's that we said that if you're going to put in underground parking with the size that we are allowing, which would be the build area, that it's logical, if you're already putting in that cost, that you would have some underground basement.
Sorry, I think.
Right, and I thought we, we had agreed that. So I don't know why we would be debating it again.
Well, just getting clarification that that's in line with the intent of the council at this point, since what I've presented was strictly related to underground parking.
Okay.
Sorry, let me just make sure I understand the question is, are we okay with people adding basement space and underground parking?
Let me say it. The, we, we talked about the area that could be hollowed out for underground development.
Right.
Would be the entire buildable area, not just defined by the sidewalls of the building because there may be some open space in there and, and they could do the whole.
Right.
Buildable area.
Okay.
And when we talked about it, I, I, I think we talked about that being for both underground parking and if they want to put inhabitable space or I suppose, you know, some kind of workspace that's not habitable, that's fine. But it can go under that entire buildable area. And at the same time, we said that if they, they put inhabitable space under the ground, that that would be FAR, an FAR bonus or FAR free. If and only if 100% of the resident parking was put underground.
That's correct.
And that gets to the second point I have here relative to underground parking incentives. Clarifying that the intent in RM 10 is to count habitable basement towards the FAR unless all residential parking is provided below grade.
Yes.
Yeah, we said all resident parking.
I, I just want to clip. I have a little bit of a problem, I believe, of the entire buildable area instead of the footprint of the building. Because in R1A, it's just under the footprint of the building, correct? It's not the whole buildable area. I mean, that, but frankly, most of the houses are maxed out to their buildable area, you know, as their footprint. But this could be excessive, I think.
Well, if they, if they got to put their parking underneath, that takes up space that most people don't do underground. And, and you're, you're right, today in R1A, they go to the edge of the building. That's it. But the thought was when we were discussing it that it would be the buildable space because you're putting parking potentially as well as maybe a room or two down there, if not just your utilities down there to get space, so.
Yeah, we're incentivizing parking. That's the intention here.
I have a question. So if we did not allow habitable space in the basement, would that mean they couldn't have like storage units underground? Because most tend to have that in their basement, is that?
It depends. When, that can get into an issue with an occupancy classification in the building code. So sometimes the way single-family homes can get around that is they call it storage. They get a classification for utility use or utility space under the building code. But then it's not necessarily meant to be habitable or finished. But then you go in and it's.
You do it later.
Right. So.
Make a comment. Just a, just a real quick comment. You know, if you're going to go to the expense of doing underground parking, having, having an underground room and still in the same area right next to it, the, the cost of that extension is, is nil, really. Because the cost of the, doing the underground parking is getting the, the driveway down and then it's, you know, digging out where you're going to park the cars. So it doesn't make any sense to say, oh, we're not going to allow you to put any rooms down there. And that's what I thought we had agreed, that we would be able to do that. Now, the, the vice mayor is bringing up, you know, question is whether or not we do the buildable area or just the space like has it under R1A today.
And just for clarification, the only question here is whether or not to count habitable basement as FAR for clarification in the ordinance that you introduced last. Not to change the.
Yeah.
If you want to, if you want to change that, that's a kind of a cleanup thing down the road we need to do.
Okay, well, we weren't, I didn't think we were going to have, it wasn't going to count towards FAR if they have.
Yeah, no, I mean, we, we were really focused on wanting to create whatever incentive we could possibly create that's reasonable to get people to have it parking underground. And we know it's expensive to do that, so there have to be incentives to convince people to do that. And one of those incentives is that if you put 100% of resident parking underground, then you get the F, you don't have to count the FAR for underground habitable space. But if you don't put 100% of parking underground and you build a basement, you've got to count that as FAR. That's going to motivate people to put parking underground. And I think everything we can do to keep the parking in these multifamily units off the surface is going to benefit the neighbors.
Right.
So.
That's where I thought we ended.
I, I just, I agree with that. I have a question about the 100% component of, of the owner parking. Is it like feasible to fit all of those cars under that? So I'm worried like if, if they can only hit 90%, are they going to abandon it because they don't get this carrot? And we would rather they do 90% than 100%. So I'm just wondering, are we setting a too high of a?
Given the size of the lots that we're dealing with right now, no.
Okay. Cool.
How many parking spots per unit is one per, per bedroom or one per unit?
But that's.
One per bedroom.
A lot of, well, that's a lot of cars, you guys. Two, it's two and a half.
Two.
It's the max.
Maximum two per unit.
You don't have to put the visitor parking.
And then you can add more if you locate your parking below grade.
Right, so it's two and a half was the.
2.6.
2.6. So I'm just wondering, like, can we fit all the cars? This is my question because I don't want to have an incentive that no one can achieve.
But 2.6 isn't required, that, that.
Right.
They would have a right to do that. But if you're saying put 100% of resident parking underground.
Yeah.
That would be two.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
I, I think there has to be that limit. There, there has to be that amount because that's the goal.
A smart car.
All right, can we stay on task here? We're all having side talks here.
That's okay.
Okay, next slide.
So this brings us to the list of changes for the RM 20 and 40 text. I haven't received any comments on these topics, so I don't have any additional slides on them. Next slide.
Except on that first table you showed, that had some RM 20, 40.
That, that table lives in what I classify the housing element scope of work today.
There you go, slide.
So staff, staff's, staff's recommendation tonight is to discuss and adopt the resolution for the initial study and mitigated negative declaration or ISMD and mitigation and monitoring reporting program or MMRP for the 2023 to 2031 housing element and zoning code updates project. To discuss and adopt the resolution for the proposed amendments to the Atherton general plan, including specific revisions. including specific revisions to the 2023 and 20 to 2031 Atherton Housing Element, and then to accept for second reading and adopt the proposed amendments to the Atherton Municipal Code and Zoning Map. And that concludes my presentation.
Can I ask you a quick question? This is not saying, from my understanding, one of the big issues tonight is, are we including the four or not including the four? So that's not even one of your-
That was called out in one of the slides that I had for the Housing Element Text.
Okay.
It's specific to the RM10 overlay.
I just want to make sure that when we're done, that you have what you need, that we all agree to, and it's clear that everybody agreed and what the thing was. So I know that's one item that we need to have an answer to tonight. So, and I don't see it called out, so that's all I'm saying.
It was earlier. It was on a previous slide and we will, as what we did the last time, we can go through every slide to get clarity and maybe take action after.
Okay, because we have a handful of big things to decide, I want to make sure we get to them.
All right, now it's public comments.
No, I think it's questions now.
Asking them while we were doing it.
Yeah, so you can, so everyone is all questioned out here?
Yeah, open it for public comment.
Nobody has any questions. Okay, let's open it to public comment.
Bob Polito, 83 Quill Court. Nothing's more important in this town than, to the residents than their privacy. Privacy is created by space to a great extent. When the, I want to talk about setbacks. When the rear setbacks were brought to the planning commission, they started at 80 feet and then graduated down to as little as 25 feet. Now, the 80 feet, I believe, was the result of three years of talking to the residents and finding out that they wanted more, not less, space between an R1 property and a multifamily property. Planning Commission had real problems with anything less than 60 feet, which is the standard R1 setback for the rear. And so we passed a resolution and recommended that 60 feet be the minimum. Staff then, at the same time they handed you our resolution, they submitted a dealing suggestion, which again, goes all the way down to 20, went all the way down to 25 feet. Now their wafts may be 25 and 35, when the real point is, neither is acceptable. So I'll close my comments by asking a group question. Basically, yes or no? Do you think the city council should allow a multifamily, two-story building densely populated, be built 35 feet from your rear fence with sightlines looking down on your pool, your patio, your kid's playground, et cetera? Yes or no? I think there was one, yes, I'd like him to come up and talk, but that's my case.
Thank you. Any other public comments?
For decorum, rules of decorum, public speakers need to address the council, not the audience.
Okay, and we have a three-minute, three-minute minimum.
Hi, my name is Woodson Martin. I reside at 580 Middlefield Road, adjacent to the Ravenswood Properties. As I've noted in previous comments, I'm concerned with the seemingly arbitrary determination of the opportunity sites and the housing element and the RM10 zone. I believe the correct way to achieve the state goals would have been to determine objective criteria for site selection and apply them uniformly across the city. However, it's clear that it's too late for that. Therefore, I would like to request that the council consider modifying the housing element proposed here today to include among the RM10 multifamily opportunity sites, the parcel located at 580 Middlefield Road, contingent upon a negative declaration or a mitigated negative declaration from a SEQA analysis conducted forthwith at city expense. Thank you.
Can't do that, take too long, six months.
Good evening. My name is Skip Hilton, otherwise known as the guy with the bum leg from Menlo Park. And I did submit a letter earlier, but I'm not sure it got into your packet, so I wanted to do some highlights. But first off, I was encouraged by the amount of feedback and input you had from residents on the roundabout. It sounds like you guys are really listening to them. I hope that you'll extend the same to the residents and neighbors for the projects and the rezoning. All the residents in my neighborhood along Bay Road and the adjoining neighborhoods are landlocked on Bay Road. And our only egress to points north and south is via 101, to 101 or to Willow or to Marsh or to downtown Menlo Park is on Bay Road. In addition, that corridor becomes congested with cut-through traffic whenever there's an incident or blockage on Highway 101, making the traffic volume really even worse, particularly during morning commute and school drop-off. In addition, as I mentioned earlier, when I was here on September 18th and on October 2nd, Menlo Park's already rezoned a vacant school parcel at 320 Sheridan Road for 88 BMR affordable housing units. Like these sites on Bay Road and Ringwood under the RM10, these three large apartment buildings are not served by any form of public transit. Therefore, we'll be adding up to 150 to 250 new vehicles to our local streets. As currently designed, this large development has only one egress on Sheridan Road, and once completed, 100% of that traffic will flow through suburban park and airport and onto Bay Road. So that's traffic that's not even being measured today. As far as I can tell, I don't, Atherton staff and planners have not made any mention or understanding about that additional impact to this corridor, that the zoning of these four parcels is going to exacerbate. And that lack of coordination is troubling. According to your own traffic study required by SEQA for this rezoning, the section of Bay Road between Greenwood and Ringwood Avenue is already considered a high-impact corridor with a VMT over 13. And any new development on this corridor is going to require mitigation, unlike many of the other sites that were under prior consideration for rezoning. A major problem with the inclusion of these four lots is higher-density RM10 is the impact of traffic and the lack of public transit options for these parcels. Without nearby public transit, we can reasonably expect that the new residents will require cars to get to and from these properties. And with current parking plans of up to two vehicles per unit, that means 18 vehicles per parcel or 72 additional vehicles across the four. Bay Road is a major bike corridor for schoolchildren and commuters riding along. Thanks, Laurel, Menlo, Atherton and downtown. Increasing the volume of traffic across these bike lanes is a danger. Many of these are adolescents and younger. I guess I would just wrap by saying that I don't understand exactly why staff feels they should overrule Atherton's planning commission when they recommend the council remove these four parcels. They are planning experts and by, they know that these will come across planning when they, to be developed. And so this is like kicking the can down the road to a future planning commission, a future council to approve. They've said that right now this is not a good plan. And so I encourage you to listen to those experts. They've done the analysis. They cannot in good conscience recommend these four parcels as part of the rezoning. So we'll hope that you will not include them in the RM10 rezoning. Thank you.
We're doing three minutes comment, just to remind everyone.
John Riddle, 97, Frederick. You all have heard my spiel before, but I want to just state one more time. The Ringwood Road and Bay Road properties do not meet RENA. They do not meet, the variety of housing is defined in the legislation. They are not AFFH. They are not counted towards anything in this intended state legislation. The housing element is for affordable housing and variety of housing is defined, and you're supposed to be active on the AFFH. It doesn't meet any of those on the Bay Road and Ringwood properties. This is absolutely superfluous, okay? They don't meet the legislative intent. They're not affordable, $3 to $5 million townhomes are not affordable housing. 999 Ringwood is different than the other properties. It is narrow and so is the adjoining R1 property. The adjoining R1 property has a 50-foot setback. The recommendation is that there be 120 feet to 60-foot setbacks between the properties. I would recommend that that be included, that there be a minimum, if that is property is still on the, in the R10, be a minimum of 120 feet from the rear setbacks between the properties. So you at least have that same distance that has been set for everyone else. The house on 999 Ringwood should be removed. It is not appropriately set up for the large housing. 120 feet of a large building like that set up so close to the property lines makes no sense. It is an invasion of everyone's property and privacy all around. It also is dangerous. It comes at a five-way intersection, which is more dangerous than it is anywhere else on the road. And to try and have construction there and have a year or two of building in that area with all the trucks and attendant construction activity is going to make that an absolute roadblock and a danger in that area. It should be removed for the safety of the community. I'd also like to have a 17.35.00.030E, where it talks about communal activities. That was, I'd like to have the communal activities defined and to specifically exclude pools. It should not have pools on any of these. Everything that was presented by the M Company was, did not have pools. None of those things did, and they should not have it. 10 families in recreating there would make it intolerable. Lastly, I'd like to just state that it should not be a ministerial review. It should have a discretionary review. Ministerial review was a legislative process that was intended for affordable housing. $3 to $5 million properties are not affordable housing and should not be granted that privilege. I hope you'll take this into consideration when you're considering what you're going to do. I think that the runaway train comment earlier was referenced to what we're having here tonight also. And I think that Mr. DeGolia's comment that it's most important thing to do is to do the right thing, is what you ought to do, the right thing would be to remove 999 at least from that. And I think the right thing to do is to remove all of those homes. Thank you.
Hi, evening council members. I just want to point out that some new information which I learned over the last two days regarding to the traffic situation. So as you're all aware of that, and I will be particularly talking about the Bay Road and the Ringwood, because that's where I live and that's what I usually do day-to-day in terms of more interaction there. There are two schools in the area, as you are aware of. The exact stat more or less is there about 150 bikers just going to the Laurel, lower campus every day. Okay, and then there are more going to the lower, upper campus, which also transit in and out through that area. Menlo Atherton has more of the bicyclists and the pedestrians with the high school kids going in. It's already a high-volume traffic from Lindenwood, lots of younger families. We have about like 40% of the houses have kids in the schooling-going age in the Lindenwood compared, which is higher than the San Mateo County average, as is for the SCA study. Now, the Ringwood is a funnel in some sense towards all of this, and the Bay Road is a funnel towards all of these two schools. It's also recently learned that in Flood Park, there is an active construction going on right now where they are building a multipurpose stadium. This would both be a football and a baseball stadium. So all of that traffic, besides just the school traffic, is also going to come up through this area. So it's not just, already just a school time issue, it's a much wider issue. And as other Menlo Park residents mentioned, like there is a, whenever there is a jam on 101, that's the way road through the marsh, down through the Bay Road, all the way up to the Willow Road, is typical path taken in both directions whenever there is a jam. So the Menlo Park School District principals, so Coia Union High School principals, they have come out and, including the principal of Menlo Atherton High School, have already put forward, which is happening tomorrow in the San Mateo County, that Coleman should be turned already into a one-way street during the morning times. Okay, and that's the, already, there is a high amount of like, you know, like multipurpose housing construction on the Coleman, and there is no pedestrian pathway on the Coleman. So you can already just see what would happen to these Bay Roads if you actually go follow that thing. That example is live there on the Coleman, and this is actually going right now in San Mateo County. So, and it's also evident from the Coleman Avenue that this has been ongoing for very many years. This, yeah, thank you. The cities have been, sorry, the parents have been pushing for it, and finally the school also has come forward with it. Lastly, I want to make a comment that there are about 248 ADUs already in the Atherton approved. There are 60 housing coming from the school areas, from the Menlo College and other school areas, four in the Gilmore House. So the four of the properties already cover the 48 housing, and that will meet the state limit. So you don't need to really include these properties with the high traffic to actually meet the state requirements. So, thank you.
Tom Georgie with Stephanie Sargent, 425 East Oakwood Boulevard, Redwood City residents. Same thing that I've been saying for, I think, three years now, two and a half years. You're going to vote tonight on something that's going to likely devastate our privacy. And please keep the setbacks on the sides and the rear as far as possible, as large as possible, to ensure any form of privacy that my, myself and my five other neighbors that surround Aratus property currently enjoy. Please take your planning commission's recommendation to keep the sliding scale or side setback, for the side setback and 60-foot rear setback. 38 feet would be what is the sliding scale for the width of Aratus property at 139.98 feet wide. And I don't think that that would hinder development at all. What he wants to do is put in three, $4 million homes, townhomes, and I think he's going to build with any setback you give him, because it's generational wealth. Why wouldn't he? This would at least help the neighbors a fraction. It would help us a fraction. I was on the roof today cleaning the gutters, looking over there, looking at his tractor barn, which is less than 25 feet away from the fence and thinking, what if that wall were 21 feet high or 22 feet high and then cut back to be 34 feet high? It's catastrophic, it's horrible. Maximize the height of the screening. Please don't allow the chopping down of the beautiful grove of redwood trees and the hundreds of years-old monkey pod tree out front. Those beautiful trees provide shade and cooling for all the homes surrounding the neighborhood or for all the neighbors that walk around the neighborhood. That there isn't more understanding from HCD on the process here with Atherton. I think that maybe that's a leadership issue. I think that you guys should be spending a lot of time trying to speak to Sacramento and try, because Atherton's not like any other city. Can't buy a pack of gum here, so why, you know, multifamily housing standards. You should be not speaking in terms of marketability. Should be speaking in terms of how it works within Atherton. And it's like this fear-mongering going on from end group, that you guys got to get this done and you've got to make it marketable for a developer. It just seems like the wrong thrust. I know there was an effort to lobby Sacramento, never heard anything more about that. It's just going to, it's just the same old conversation here about what you need to do to get your element passed. And there's really only one house on the element right now, and it's 23 Oakwood. So I would ask that, based on that unique lot, that you would consider what would benefit the neighbors and not benefit the property owner, because that property owner is going to benefit generational wealth is what you're giving him with this entitlement. So I would appreciate your consideration, thank you.
Carol Flaherty, Comino Parlo's Arborly's. First, I want to thank you. It's been a very long year. You've had a ton of meetings, ton of workshops, ton of special sessions. You've had a ton of meetings, ton of workshops, ton of special sessions. You've listened to an awful lot of comments from a lot of residents. But I think tonight, if residents really understood what was in the charts we saw, you wouldn't have this crowd. You'd have two hundred to three hundred people out here. And I would have been on the phone calling them as well. I am very, very surprised to see a chart tonight that says we can potentially have forty-foot heights. We never said that. We talked about thirty-four maximum. We talked about gabled roofs. We talked about dormers. We talked about buildings that looked like our town. We didn't talk about buildings that are potentially three times larger above ground than the single-family homes you see today. We asked you to preserve our bucolic appearance. Try to get buildings that look kind of like Atherton does today and try to preserve our values and our privacy. A three-story building, which is what forty feet will be, does not preserve privacy. Potentially thirty thousand square feet above ground does not preserve privacy. So what are these lots going to look like? Well, they're going to have almost no greenscape, lot of hardscape, lot of building. If you can even get a garage in the back, it will be almost half of the back of the lot. That's what you're going to see. There's no parking in the front at thirty feet. So where are people going to park? This garage is going to cost four hundred thousand dollars. Having a few buildable units down below that will have light wells for the windows, not windows, is not going to incentivize any developer to go below ground, not for four hundred thousand dollars. We said you could build into attics, thinking that it was a thirty-four foot height. Well, I, I just don't even recognize these buildings anymore or these lots from what we talked about for most of the year. But I don't see where it preserves privacy. I don't see where it keeps our town looking like we thought. If you think it's going to be just a few lots, this is, this is the future. When we have the mid-cycle review and potentially we have to add more, well, are we going to light this on Pohimas or Alejandro or Stockbridge? Or down Alameda? Or wherever it's going to go in town? Because it's not going to stay on these lots. And this is the standard. Thank you.
You come up to the microphone, please.
Hi, good evening. Uh, I'm Warren Jensen. My wife Elizabeth and I live at thirty Frederick Avenue. Uh, and thank you for the time tonight. I'll try to be brief in my comments as I know we, many of the issues have been touched upon. I'd kind of like to start where this meeting kicked off. And, you know, there were several things mentioned very early on in the meeting. First thing was do the right thing. Second was listen to your constituents. And I think you're hearing loud and clear that this is not the right thing, nor is it the voice of your constituents that want this done. Secondly, um, I was also touched by, you know, the discussion going on around the roundabout. And there was a couple of things that were missing from the discussion of the roundabout. Laurel Elementary and Menlo Atherton. And the fact that our kids ride their bikes up and down all through Lindenwood, up and down through Ringwood, along Bay Road. All you have to do is go anytime in the morning and see the impact this would have on the sa- safety of our children and on the safety of our neighborhood. We should never forget Laurel. Let's never forget Menlo Atherton and all the children in the neighborhood. Next, I think the solution to the point just raised a minute ago doesn't even begin to address the issues that this will create for Lindenwood. Frederick Avenue, Oakwood, all through there are just going to become big byways. When you start adding, what, a hundred and twenty, a hundred and fifty cars to the solution, I think, you know, the comment, uh, Commissioner Holland or Mayor Hall, I don't know what to, how to address, councilman or councilwoman. You know, that's a lot of cars. And it really doesn't even begin to take into account really the impact this will have on our neighborhood. I also feel that this is a solution which is just being kind of shoehorned one way or another. We're going to adjust the setback here. We're going to do this. We're going to provide this incentive to try to make sure that the cars go below ground, but we're not really sure. And so maybe these hundred and twenty cars just sort of end up out on the street or behind in some garage someplace. You know, that is not Atherton, and it is not Lindenwood. And then finally, I would mention, I happened to attend the planning meeting. And I believe I have it correctly. There were a couple of the mitigating suggestions done to deal with the traffic and also the children walking up Ringwood. You know, and it was, oh, we're going to put in a stoplight, you know, at that corner. Well, then you're going to have to probably put in a stoplight at Frederick too. And maybe a stoplight up someplace else. It, it just does not even remotely pass the smell test. And then the best one was we're going to spend, I think it was like six or eight million dollars, and we're going to put a walkway up Ringwood. Well, I challenge you to walk with me on Ringwood and show me where that's going to go other than in basically on the side of the road. That is not a solution to protecting our children. So I'd just end with where I started. It's time to do the right thing, and it's time to listen to your constituents. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Jeff Morris. Um, I sent you all, um, a letter today. Cause we're really concerned, uh, that what we heard in the first reading on October second is not reflected, um, in Brittany's proposed amendments. And we've, um, chatted with her, um, but we're real clear that the, in the R one A, the standard maximum building height is thirty feet. And the vertical sidewall maximum is twenty-two feet. Now you can go, you can create more setback on a five-to-one ratio to get a thirty-four foot building height and a twenty-eight foot maximum vertical sidewall. And so you're going to be back ninety feet from the street. So now what we're looking at right now, when we, when Councilmember DeGolia made the motion, um, on October second, we heard as citizens, as residents, that the vertical sidewall in the front maximum was twenty-eight feet and on the side and rear twenty-one feet. That was the motion. Nobody said anything about adding more, a one-to-one. This, this report says you can back up six feet and increase the vertical sidewall from twenty-eight to thirty-four feet in the front. And that's also twenty-six feet from the, from the property line. So you're basically having a thirty-four foot tall box twenty-six feet from the property line. And just as, uh, Mr. Plato said, how the rear setbacks are important. Well, the front setbacks are important too. And I also think that it's really important that we don't just focus on the properties on Ravenswood, Ringwood, and Bay Road. Whatever rules we agree to are going to apply to every street in Atherton. And I think it's really short-sighted to say, well, we're only worried about these streets right now. Once we create these rules, those are the rules for the entire town. And it's very short-sighted. So we really would like, um, this final proposed amendment to strike the one-to-one, uh, language it has in it and go with Councilmember DeGolia's recommendation, its motion that was approved. Twenty-eight foot maximum front sidewall, twenty-one foot sidewall, side and rear vertical sidewall maximum. If you want to go up to the thirty-four feet, then you do the elegant sloping roof like you were talking about, Elizabeth, or the layered look. But you don't have a thirty-four foot front sidewall. It's twenty-eight feet and then a pitched roof to get to the thirty-four foot maximum. And, um, I appreciate that. And I also just want you to know that, um, I think that, um, if you go to sixty, fifty-five percent FAR, which is in the document, we're not complaining. We, but if you add, if you're giving people basement space, you're, we're going to be up to seventy percent or more FAR. And I think it's important for that to be reflected in the housing element because if the HCD blocks at the forty-five percent or fifty-five percent, they got to understand that what this says is, um, you can build over thirty thousand square feet of habitable space using, which you guys have already passed, and that's, that's seventy percent or more. And that should be in the document. It shouldn't be just forty-five to fifty-five. It should be the entire number. And it's hard to know the exact number because you don't know how much basement space is going to be built, but. All right. Thank you very much, but I really would appreciate it if we clarify, take out the one-to-one and twenty-eight foot max in the front, twenty-one rear and side.
Thank you.
So can, can I make a question?
Sure.
A clarification of something that I heard him say, that, you know, what we are doing for these, uh, overlays, um, would apply to all of the building standards across, uh, Atherton, our R one As and everything. It's, I thought it was just over these properties that we are, uh, talking about.
That's right.
Only. So Jeff, just to make you feel more at ease, these, uh, new standards that we are creating for the overlays, right? The properties that we are rezoning, quote unquote, would not apply across the board to every property.
So to not engage the public.
But they will apply because there's going to be more properties with the RM ten zoning in the mid-cycle review.
Go ahead, George.
Public speaker's alluding to is if the town expands zoning or allows other lots to have the RM ten overlay, they would apply to those lots as well.
Yeah, but that would, but that's.
Only if it expands.
And we would get to review.
Future.
Future RM ten.
We could also modify that.
Ask a process question? Since there have been questions raised, are we doing the same thing that we've done in the last couple meetings where Mona and Brittany kind of addressed? I know it's halfway through public comments, so I don't know if you've been taking notes, but, um, there were a few things that were raised that I think could be corrected by Brittany and by Mona potentially that. Is it too late? Are you guys?
Except that, up to the mayor.
Instead of having us do this.
Yeah, I know.
Guys. Okay. Go, Brittany, go.
All right. Do we have any more? So are we?
Yeah.
Let's try and get through them.
My name is Elizabeth Jensen. I live at thirty Frederick Avenue, and I have been to several of these meetings as well as planning commission meetings. My heart is beating so hard inside my chest tonight. I think that people, the residents in Lindenwood have, and throughout the town, have articulated very clearly our strong feelings about, um, the multi-housing for us in particular on Bay Road. But tonight I feel like this is, um, it's all great to talk about our privacy and setbacks and, um, parameters and things like that. But I feel really strongly that you as a council need to really take into account the number one priority for our town, and that is our children. I'm, um, I'm a mother of four, a grandmother of five, and am hoping for many more for, uh, my children who are not yet married. I walk and drive past all of the children who are riding on bikes and walking through our neighborhoods. They're coming home from school. They're going to school. They're riding to friends' houses. They're walking with their parents. They're being, um, they're on the back of parents' bikes. And I feel like we are not addressing the number one concern of the safety of these children. And I'm afraid that you're overlooking the most important priority for all of us in this town, that you add more traffic to a place that is already congested, that is already unsafe, that has cars driving way too fast to of, because of the backup of the traffic. Once they get off that corner and they cruise through Frederick and go through Lindenwood, they're all driving too quickly, and we are not protecting our children by building these multifamily housing on those four lots at the corner. And I feel like it's that we have just, um, spent so much time protecting other parts of the city that we've come down to a neighborhood that is just the corner of Menlo Park and Atherton, and you're not hearing from all the families that live on the other side of that road that, um, that have children that will be in jeopardy every single day. And we talk about our children being safe at school. Well, they might not, they might not be safe getting to school if you add these properties, um, as multifamily housing. Thank you.
Dave Arata, twenty-three Oakwood. I feel like the elephant in the room. Couple of things. Those, that four hundred thousand dollar garage. In our project, we have some low-income units that'll probably sell for about five hundred thousand, and the garage is going to be four hundred. This is not going to work. For, it's almost four years that I've been working on this. And in the last two and a half years, I've, we haven't gotten anywhere. And I'm really waiting to see what happens and what you put in because I want to put some numbers to it. And if it works, it works. If it doesn't, sign the R. Thank you.
I'm Steve Albano. I live at nine 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 Ringwood Avenue. Uh, wanted to briefly address the traffic issues which have been brought up repeatedly. Uh, there certainly are traffic issues, uh, in the neighborhood. There's backups in the morning, in both directions on Bay Road and especially heading up Ringwood Avenue towards the high school. Uh, we've lived on the property for three years. In that time, I've never had any issue whatsoever ingressing or egressing from our property on the corner. Uh, we have a egress on Ringwood, which is fairly close to the intersection. But there's also an egress on Bay Road, which is much further from the intersection. Uh, and it's similar to the egresses of the other three properties on Bay Road. Now, if you come out any of those, our property or any of the three properties on Bay Road, uh, during the time period between about seven forty-five and about eight oh five in the morning, or eight ten, if you try to turn right, there is backup. Uh, the cars are moving, um, but it is slow. If you turn left and go the other direction, it's, it's, it's free. So in regard to, uh, safety for children, I see all the bikes as well. In fact, I was out there looking at traffic this morning, and a woman with two kids on her e-bike came flying through the intersection, didn't stop at the trap, at the stop sign. And I was sort of, uh, taken aback by it. Uh, I think the biggest thing you could do for, uh, children's safety is have some enforcement at that intersection of, um, I, I know it's probably a tall order to get kids to stop on their bikes at stop signs, but that would really be helpful. It's not so much the cars. I mean, of course, cars present a traffic safety issue to, to the kids. But it's really the bicyclists who are not paying attention to traffic lights, especially the e-bikes, because they are really moving. And, uh, they come through that intersection around blind corners, and, uh, that is a dangerous, uh, situation. I've told the council, I'm, my wife and I are fine with, uh, those four properties either being left as single-family residences. That's what we bought our property for. Or being, uh, rezoned, uh, for multifamily properties. Uh, however, we have asked that if they're rezoned, that all four of the properties be included and that not any one be left out. Yep. Finally, on the traffic, the traffic issues that exist are not specific to those, uh, four properties or not specific to any one of those four properties. They're neighborhood-wide issues, uh, that require a, a, a solution. It is a problem. It is a problem, but I, I don't see it as something that's specific to those four properties. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Good evening. Pamela Riddle, ninety-seven Frederick Avenue. I want to follow up on a couple of things our neighbor just said. It's one thing for a single-family home to not have any problem getting out of that corner. But if you had ten units with three-bedroom units, so that's thirty cars per unit, per property, hundred-and-twenty cars more coming around that intersection, trying to navigate through that area, that is going to be a significant increase, particularly when you keep in mind that Menlo Park has also provided for some housing that's going to impact the same area. I was really noticed this evening when we, when I came in that you all spent a great deal of time and consternation over the intersection at Atherton Avenue and Alameda de las Pulgas and how that would be configured and what you'd want to know in advance. This SEQA study just says that you'll need to mitigate these traffic issues with no plan. No plan. You have no plan on how to do this. You're just going to shove it off because it's, it's Menlo Park's road. There, this is absurd for you not to consider the impact in this area before you elect to change this configuration and put many, many more cars and residences in this corner. It, it's absurd. A couple more things I wanted to point out. I was quite taken aback that the council was set on limiting Gilmore to four units. Gilmore is the only area where there could be some actual affordable housing that Atherton could provide. And my goodness, they would be on a park. And you're more concerned about how that will affect the park than how that will affect people and their private residences and how it's going to impact their lives and their tranquility and their peace of mind. It, it's absurd. Build there, not in our area where it doesn't make any sense. Another thing that was talked about at the October second meeting, and I saw nothing done about, is daylight planes. Now, Mr. Morris was pointing out that the proposal is that you could put boxes up. Brittany seemed to think that taking care of the Eaves lines that would be the same as a daylight plane, it is not. I used to live in Menlo Park. It allows consideration of the neighbors and light coming into their property. You build this massive structure across the back of my yard, it's going to block the light as well as my privacy. So that should be something that should be considered is daylight planes. If you're going to limit the number of homes that might be buildable in Gilmore to four, why don't you do that to the lots where we are too? Why ten and maybe more, but they can get some extra bonuses? The other thing is, I, I don't think there's enough consideration in suggesting these massive underground garages for these structures of how that's going to affect the trees. This is an area of large oaks. It's an oak plain. And these trees are going to be destroyed, again affecting the character of our homes and our neighborhood. Thank you.
Do we have any more comments in the room? Seeing none, there's one percent of minds of giving a report.
Hi, can I go ahead?
Yes, please. If you could try, do your best to speak up so that we can hear you well.
Sure. So I want to begin by saying thank you to the council for taking the time in going through the processes to what must not be easy. We, we recognize that. I'm a mom of kids who go to Laurel School. And I want to share something joyous, which was discussed before. If you come to that street in the morning, there are kids from different ages, different temperaments, and, and, you know, waving, and, and not a single kid, you know, would look sully because that's the start of a good day. They're on the bikes. There are one-fifty bikers just for Laurel Campus, which is an unheard-of number. We did not come to that number yesterday. It is a culture that has been cultivated over years by parents, by leaders of the school, by the leaders of the community, by our police department. They have all worked together to make sure that these kids are biking to their school. They are encouraged. They are given stars, extra perks, treats, high-fives. Parents look out for each other. And if you add, and it, it is also not new to us that we get an email from a principal saying, you know, a child was hit today. I shared in the last meeting how a child was dragged across the street while the child was on the bike. People around thought the child was dead. We do not want that. We do not want a repeat of that. And perhaps that is why since that meeting, what has changed is that the leaders of our schools, the principals, the superintendents have come together to say that Coleman is unsafe and we need to change that. But what we are also observing is that Coleman is a multi-city issue, and it has taken ten years to solve that. And it's the same thing with the stop sign that we have. It's a five-place stop sign where we share it with Menlo Park, unregistered land, and Atherton. I do not see how we, we will be able to solve that issue. We will have the same emails coming to you. We will have the same issues coming to you in a couple of years. I also want to share that a lot of the community, community that is going to be impacted by these houses is going to be young families. And they may not be present today, but I'm sharing the sentiments to what is discussed on, on the drop-offs and the pick-offs during, you know, in, in the, in the parking lots. Because this is the time when we're trying to put our kids to bed, where we're trying to wrap our day. Most of us just want to do our job and raise the kids in a safe manner. And I assume that that's the right thing to do. And if you add these houses, which nobody, nobody who has, is qualified to comment on, on the safety has said this is the best place to do in this city. So I, I really do feel that you should perhaps do the right thing and, and look at, at these choices that we're making today that's going to impact our, our, our kids who are going to grow up.
Just under thirty seconds.
Yep. I, this is, this is a plea of a mother to say that let's keep these places safe for, for kids to bike, which is, which is the right. Or let's tell them that, you know what, you do not have the right to bike on your own. Wait till you grow up and get a car. Thank you.
Okay, so, so we have no more public comments. We open it up to questions.
Close public comment.
Yeah, close public comment.
We'll close the public?
Yeah.
Questions before we ask.
That's correct. Thank you, Stacy. We are going to close public comment, and we're going to have staff answer some of the questions that were raised.
Sure. Let me just look over my notes here.
She'll be right back.
All right.
Go ahead.
So I think the first thing that I want to highlight is one of the notions brought up that this, the SEQA document doesn't have a plan. The SEQA analysis that was done in the initial study and mitigated negative declaration is for a programmatic, is at a programmatic level, meaning it's for the housing plan. It's not meant to be evaluating a specific project at the time that a development is proposed. It sets up the structure by which that development would be reviewed. So it, the program is a plan in itself for future development to follow and then be evaluated when it's submitted.
Okay. Can I just respond to you just to clarify? So in, in that regard, when, if, whatever, the element is approved and these properties are part of the overlay and the the intersection, we can then develop, you know, an intersection, we can partner with Menlo Park. We, because part of it's on our road also, right? It's, it's not all Menlo Park roads. I'm talking about Bay and Ringwood.
Correct.
And we would, you know, try to set up a, a, a safety program for that intersection, complete with, you know, studies of traffic and bicycle lanes and maybe a, a light or whatever.
So that depends on the scale of development that's proposed. If it's all four sites coming in as one development with forty units at one time, that's going to have a much larger trip generation than if one site comes in and just develops four, five properties or five units.
Understand. But couldn't we not, in the existing conditions of that intersection? Because everybody that I talk here says that it's unsafe for children and biking and pedestrians, especially in that heavy commute traffic in the morning. But, I mean, wouldn't we want to look at that, partner with Menlo Park and try to just look at it anyway, even if there's no development?
So some of those are actual, some of those efforts are actually underway.
Are they?
One of the ones I've mentioned, I believe, maybe at the September meeting with city council and then at the August meeting with the planning commission, was that the city of Menlo Park in partnership with the county was working on kind of a safe route to schools effort on Ringwood and Coleman. And they had just released a study for that earlier this year, I want to say in February, where that, the, the price to study and do the analysis and the design, those sunk costs were identified and they were considering moving forward.
Well, the, one of the speakers did bring up Coleman becoming a one-way. And I, I know, you know, that that is a very, very heavily trafficked road. And it's a cut-through from Marsh and Willow, and well, Willow, not Marsh, sorry.
So I don't know enough of that study to know if it had any relationship to this decision on exploring Coleman as one-way or testing that out temporarily, which it sounds like.
I, I've just, just kind of helped respond to a resident, you know, concerns about the safeties of that intersection, and we're not doing anything about it. But, you know, we would, we'll be doing something about it if, in fact, the development starts happening. So, yeah.
George, it's my understanding that Ringwood is not in the jurisdiction of Atherton. We go up to the edge of the road, but we don't own the road. Is that not correct?
That's correct.
So the responsibility is the county and Menlo Park that need to do something.
I wasn't aware.
Yeah, well, that's what.
Well, but I think the distinction is different on Bay Road where the frontage in Atherton, the frontage of the Bay Road properties is in Atherton, but the street itself is within the county or the city.
Right. Yeah, again.
I have a, I have a question. One of the other processes we're doing, Robert Ovadia, is we're doing our Bike-Ped Master Plan Review. And I'm just wondering if, I know that that's a, I think what I, what we're hearing a lot is that that's a multi-jurisdictional intersection, and a lot of people are concerned. It's a collective game of not-it. And I think we've heard pretty clearly that regardless of whatever happens at that intersection, there are some safety issues there for kids on bikes. And so I'm wondering if our Bike-Ped Master Plan Review can look at.
It's not our road.
I'm, but I think it serves our residents.
Menlo Park. We can make a recommendation in Menlo Park, but it's not our road. We can't say we're going to do something.
That we're playing. So I'm just wondering, I know they also have a safe route to school. They have a Vision Zero plan. They have a lot of plans. So could our Bike Plan Master Plan look at that intersection and what their plans are and see if there's something we can do on our end to accelerate that joint plan is my question.
Before Robert answers that question, it's kind of, it's related, but it's a little off to the housing element. If the council would like staff to reach out to Menlo Park, start to talk about traffic safety, bicycle safety improvements at that intersection, we can certainly do that as a, as a focus down the line outside of the housing element.
Right.
Okay.
But could that happen as part of our Bike-Ped Master Plan that's already in progress?
Be integrated as part of whatever process we do.
Okay.
Can I make one additional comment too, in response to some of the SEQA and traffic impacts? I just wanted to add that SEQA prohibits us from requiring a project applicant to mitigate for existing impacts. And so during a lot of public comments, you hear that, you know, this intersection is unsafe or, or this portion is unsafe, and that is an existing circumstance with respect to traffic, which we cannot require anyone new coming in to mitigate because they didn't create it. That's an existing condition, basically. As the city manager has indicated, staff can work to see what we can do within our existing plans. However, new projects that exacerbate or add new impacts, those, those impacts will be analyzed in a project-specific SEQA analysis to the extent it's warranted. And they will have to mitigate accordingly for their incremental contribution to or exacerbation of the traffic impacts.
The other SEQA-related issue that I want to touch on is this notion that other projects haven't been considered in the traffic analysis for the ISMND. And there is a section in the traffic analysis that does look at cumulative project impacts. And that's looking at all of the tri, uh, taking a step back, this is relative to the vehicle miles traveled analysis because that's what's required to be reviewed under SEQA. The ISMND also looked at level of service, but that's because that's in Atherton's general plan, and so it specifically pertains to Atherton roadways. With the VMT analysis, that data is aggregated from the county and the region's Association of Bay Area Governments and the Metropolitan Transportation Commission, which inherently, ABAG MTC, is also the body that has allocated ARENA requirement. So there is some crossover between what might be in Menlo Park's housing element and is anticipated in development in their jurisdiction or Redwood City's jurisdiction and all, how all of these roadways integrate amongst these jurisdictions. I think the other thing worth noting is that a lot of the funding for the improvements that you then see in the ISMND as suggested, get funded by ABAG and MTC as a critical source to make sure that these issues are addressed. So just wanting to put that out there.
Good, good to know. Yeah, thank you.
On the topic of RENA, I want to, the regional housing needs allocation. I want to acknowledge that, yes, the RM10 program is currently not crafted to meet ARENA requirement. That has come up in public comment. There is an assertion that it has, that the way that our RM10 program does not meet affirmatively furthering fair housing, and that's incorrect. The reason that is incorrect is because Atherton is historically a single-family zoned community. So what HCD is looking for here is a diversification of your zoning. It doesn't necessarily have to include affordable or inclusionary housing as a component because inherently multifamily housing is more affordable than a single-family property, a single-family home in this jurisdiction. Now, if we have a problem with RENA and we have adopted an inclusionary housing program, it could be that we look to the RM10 zoning to actually help supplement any sort of deficiency in that area. So it's also not a hundred percent accurate or fair to say that these sites might have any influence on our RENA numbers. Yes.
So to have been fully included in RENA, we would have had to have RM20, is that correct? They would have had to been classified as twenty per unit?
If.
But the council asked to step it down due to consideration of neighbors and things like that. And so that took us out of that rank, but it still applies to fair housing.
Correct. AFFH.
Okay.
Which is, which, which to respond to one of the residents who has asserted that, you know, these properties does not meet that, but it, but they do.
Correct.
That's what I'm hearing from you.
Another comment was a request for the council to consider limiting the RM10 properties to up to four units as is consistent with the language currently and the. to up to four units as is consistent with the language currently in the um, housing element revision. Uh, I want to make sure that it's clear that currently a single-family home can have up to four units through the SB nine program. So that is already on the table and active under the current R one A zoning.
We're not making any new changes.
Yeah. Um, so now I'm going to start focusing in on a couple of comments relative to the standards. Um, there was a question on the placement of the, well, not necessarily the placement of the sidewalls, but the expectation that the sidewalls are capped at a specific height and do not increase at the forty-five degree angle uh, that we've concluded is a drawing in the packets over the past few iterations. Um, I'll come back to that, but I want to quickly uh, cover the fact that that forty-five degree angle is inherently reflective of a daylight plane. Um, it's not just to reduce the perception of massing because it forces massing to be stepped back to a degree that's less visible from a public right-of-way. But that forty-five degree angle is meant to diminish any shadow that is coming from behind a building. Uh, from a general standard perspective, when you have setbacks, even as deep as the ones that we're proposing for RM ten, it's typically not, you typically don't see a daylight plane unless you're within a forty-five degree angle that starts right at the property line and moves forward. Um, because that's apparently where they believe the shadow is cast. Um, another aspect worth touching on relative to daylight planes and shadows is that you are also looking at the time of year, the time of day. And so a true daylight ordinance would then go as far as saying that you would need to do a shadow study where you would only look at um, the portion of the day that a shadow is cast on an adjacent property. SEQA usually starts that, that at forty feet.
Hmm.
Just to give you some reference there. So going back to the um, sidewall conversation, uh, the expectation that I heard from council was that the forty-five degree plane was not shifting and that really the only question that we were discussing at that point was the leading edge at the front setback, whether or not it's thirty feet or if we were reducing it to twenty-eight feet. I was comfortable with the reduction of thirty to twenty-eight, which is why I think we focused on that and not necessarily the shift in plane. Um, but I think where some additional confusion might be coming from members of the public is that there's, the R one A standards apply restrictions on sidewall heights across the entire property. I raised this at our last meeting on Oc- on October second. The way that we are crafting the sidewall heights, the sidewall requirements for RM ten is at the actual property lines, not restricting them throughout the lot. So that's why you can have a twenty-eight-foot sidewall restriction at the front property line for the front setback. Um, and then a lower one at the side in the rear. I have graphics that can support that. I just kind of wanted to touch on it initially before we dive into the, the full discussion.
So, okay, so in our packet, um, I see the uh, graphics for RM forty um, sidewalls and then going up maximum. That would be like on page uh, three sixty-four or four thirty-three. Where can you um?
Page thirteen.
Page thirteen? Um, of, okay, page thirteen of fifty-one?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to go to page thirteen of fifty-one. And we're going to talk about the R ten, right?
That's actually a discussion point for the council as one of the slides that Brittany had.
Oh, okay, so we're going to get to that?
Yeah.
Oh, okay, good.
Yeah, let's finish.
But that concludes everything that I had highlighted here to come back to based on what was in public comment.
Forty.
Thank you.
Okay, so I, I wanted to say something to the public, which is nobody should be, have any imagination that we want to be authorizing multifamily housing in Atherton.
Right.
We're doing this because we're required to do it by the state. And if we don't do it, and if you would like to be on the council, I'd welcome you to run and come up here.
Are you asking me?
Well, it was your comment, but, but the issue here is if we don't do it, the state has explicitly threatened that they will take over the land use zoning in Atherton.
And then we, yeah.
And there's a procedure to do that, but if they do that, they're going to rezone every one of these properties. They're not going to put an overlay on the properties. They're, wait, let me finish. No, I'm not, I'm not talking to you.
Please.
No, I'm talking to the public.
We're not taking any public.
Incorrect, incorrect, incorrect.
Thank you.
No, you're.
Let's try to be civil, please.
I'm talking to the public because this is a really important public issue for all of us in Atherton. And it's our responsibility to look out for everyone in Atherton, not just near the properties that have been targeted, which I totally understand the concerns related to those. And believe me, we've been working on this for four years. But the really critical issue that everyone needs to understand is that if we don't take action that's approved by the state, the state has threatened that they'll take over our zoning. And we look at other jurisdictions that have had problems. And we've followed these jurisdictions. I mean, we've followed them closely for four years. And I've said from the beginning that we have a benefit to watch all those jurisdictions in Southern California and see what happens to them. And what's happened with them is that in general, if they haven't gotten to the point where they're working closely with the state housing authority, either the state through the attorney general or the housing advocates have sued those jurisdictions. And according to our attorney, she's kept us very apprised of what's happened with those lawsuits. Every one of those lawsuits has ended up in settling with approving the state requirement. So it's effectively exactly the same thing as the state taking over our zoning. And believe me, we're really trying to resist having the state taking over our zoning because if the state takes over our zoning, they're going to rezone way more than we're looking at doing. And they're not going to do it with overlays. They're going to do it as rezoning. So that's a really serious threat. And we need to figure out, which is what we're really working hard to do here, is how to manage that so that it is the, in the best possible interest of us, given this uncertain, unfortunate situation. And like has been suggested that we are thinking ahead because this is just this step in the housing process. They're going to come back at us in future years. And if we don't generate these Rena numbers like at Menlo College or elsewhere where we're authorizing four-story apartment building, if we don't generate that housing, they're going to require us to do more. And whatever we approve for, right, our design objectives and these rules, these setback rules and these height rules and all the other stuff we're talking about here, they're going to apply to other properties elsewhere. So it's not just being limited to the properties that staff is recommending.
And just to kind of to add on to that, we need to get the housing element approved because every day that we're not, we're subject to a builder's remedy, such as what's going on on Willow Road at the Sunset location. Okay, where they're building a fifty-five-story building is what the plan is. Okay, and we, you know, we have been fortunate that we haven't had any of those. And to, to add on to what council member DeGolia said, when, if the state takes over our operation, we live by the state's building code, not ours. They're not going to enforce ours with the setbacks and everything. They're going to enforce what they have. And so I've said last year, as I went around to all the different communities, including Lindenwood, and said, the decision on all this stuff is hinging with the legislature. And then, you know, think about who you're voting for. And of course, our senator and our assemblyman got eighty percent of the votes in the primary. I don't expect there are going to be anything different, so no one was really listening. But those two are very high on pushing housing down here in towns like Atherton. Okay, so you need to think about that. And so what's, what we're trying to do is avoid these problems uh, and, and maintain for the most part what we have here. And we've had countless and countless numbers of workshops and tried to listen to what y'all said. And in some cases, there's been a little give and take, okay? But that's what you've, you've had, and you've elected us to do that. The planning commission was appointed. You didn't vote for them. You voted for us and we picked who those people were, okay? So, you know, we've been studying this thing for, as, as Rick pointed out, for three to four years. We've been working on this. People like Mr. Morris and, and Carol, they've been here at almost every meeting. A lot of you haven't, okay? So you don't know all the history that's gone on. The, the people in the back half, Stephanie and Tom, they've been here at every one of the meetings too. But anyway, okay, so hopefully we can continue on and make some progress and finalize this, sorry.
Anyway.
Sorry for the outburst.
Well, that's fine. I think it's important we say, and I actually have a few on these that I would like to put on the record too. I've heard many times people saying, what are the objective design standards? And why are we not applying them? Well, I can tell you what they were, and we have discussed them many times. One, it should be close to transit, close to existing density, close to housing needs, for example, schools, close to planned future multifamily density. Um, use existing res- this one's my opinion, but we should use existing resorts of the city like the Gilmore House first before going um, to individual houses.
That wasn't one of our criteria, so.
And when we, that wasn't, that was mine, you're right. Elizabeth, I added that one, added that one.
I know.
But wait a second, let me just finish. Using the best urban practices and being able to do a future plan. And when we originally proposed these, we said it had to be, what was it, three out of these to get on? We, we, we tried very hard to come up with criteria because this has been a very hard process. And so you had to have more than one of these to even be considered. And if you, if you want to look at each one, they, most of the ones that we've been on here so far qualify by the criteria. So um, I just wanted to add that to what we're saying. And that a lot of the properties were put on based on things that are in development already, other SRI that's already happening with eight hundred units, all these things that are happening around. So we're looking, the, the, this whole neighborhood is going through a transition and we're only one little piece of it. It's a part of the whole neighborhood. So that's the other thing we have to take in consideration, and our plans should consider that as well.
Let's move on.
But I think it's important we know all these things. So yes, we can move on. I do want to make sure that you are going to end up getting the things that you want. And I can say right now, I do want to talk about the Gilmore House one more time.
So we're, what my, my plan moving forward for this item is to go back through all of the orange text that I've highlighted. So we have an opportunity for clarification from the council on any of these items uh, before we get to any actions.
Do it.
Okay. So um, for the actual revisions to the housing text, what I've identified here is the SB nine cleanup. The uh, analysis, there's a lot of text on three point four two one, but that's the site selection. So that's where we're going to talk about Bay Road and Ringwood.
So what's the issue with SB nine? I'm sorry, I.
I'll, I'll come back to it. I'm just, this is just.
Lots weren't forty percent on the pictures.
Yeah, the, the illustrations on pages.
Yeah, her examples weren't forty percent, which is what we voted for, that they had to be forty percent.
I'm just going to go ahead and move on to the SB nine topic since we've started that one. Um, we added graphics and some brief narrative in this section uh, to supplement the sites that were listed in the SB nine analysis for HCD, basically to demonstrate that we have sites that could accommodate SB nine. It doesn't necessarily mean that these are SB nine. And a council member pointed out that the delineation in the lot split that we're showing here, again, just for example purposes, doesn't reflect the forty-sixty split that's required. So we're going to need to clean that up.
Yeah, so the one on the left, um, Park Lane, one acre. And it, that's going to change.
Correct.
That's wrong.
They're all going to change.
There, but both of these are examples of where the proportionality is not forty to sixty. And we're going to be amending these lines. So that's what we're doing there.
All four of them, okay.
So do you need us all to say, yes, we agree, or what do we need to go for?
I need to know if anybody has concerns about this.
No.
So we're all good.
I'm not concerned that you're going to make it right.
I mean, if we don't get to see it again. Yeah.
Okay, so now we have the conversation relative to including the three Bay Road and uh, Ring, the one Ringwood Avenue property.
Okay, so where is that in my book here?
It's on page four. Page three.
Two, one.
Three, four, two, well, I'm looking for three, four, two, one. Um.
The text here isn't necessarily as critical as the decision. Because the text is just describing which lots are included.
Three, four, two, one is on page.
Do you want to separate the discussion of the four versus the excluding of the one? Or how do we want to do this?
It's up to the council.
What's everyone doing? We're all talking separately. I just lost everybody.
Well, we're looking, we're trying to track what we're making a decision on, you know? And um, it's, the book is in front of us, but the page numbers aren't.
Thanks, Mayor Lewis. What you're looking for is just a list.
Oh, it's just a list?
It's just a list of the properties and reflecting that that would change if these properties come off.
Yeah, so what would look, if you look on the screen, you'll see that the properties on the screen in front of us, the decision before us are all four in or all four out. Is Ringwood in or is Ringwood out? Those are the decisions that are before us, so let's just address it as much as we all dread it, so.
Is that what you're raising?
Yes.
Okay.
And, you know, clearly any other properties can be out for discussion relative to the RM ten. But this is specific to these four, um, because that's where I've heard discussion on. And it's also the recommendation from the planning commission to take these off and staff's recommendation to add these back in.
So I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
Um, one of the public comments was um, the Martin family on Middlefield asking to be added contingent of a SEQA or something or, can you just speak to what that?
Yeah, I didn't understand what that was, so.
Sure. So in order to have any sites for the RM ten, we had to go through a SEQA analysis that looked at the rezoning.
Right.
That did not include anything beyond the ten sites that are currently included in RM ten.
So this was just another resident saying, we want our house to be considered.
Yes.
Okay, got it. All right, I wasn't clear if that was part of this.
But it's important because they're asking to be considered at, and I would need council direction. Staff would need council direction at this point. If you were to adopt the housing element but still want to expand the RM ten program, you would need to give staff the direction to do that.
But that would be ordering a SEQA to be.
And that would be ordering a SEQA study.
Order anything else going forward, we need a SEQA. We can't change the numbers of the units. We can go only up to the units that have already been studied in the SEQA. So nothing can go over ten in the RM ten.
Right.
For this.
At this time.
At this time.
At this time, so a later date, we may be able to.
So I would say, in my opinion, we made a mistake. We should have included two properties or maybe three properties on Middlefield Road, um, including the Martin property that we didn't know. I mean, we don't know every property in the town and we, you know, staff, both the council and staff missed that. Okay, so, I mean, if, if personally, if I could, I'd rather have the two Bay Road properties in and take all these properties on, I would have the two Middlefield Road properties in and take all these properties on Bay Road out. But we can't do that, as I understand it, because, I mean, we, we can do it, but then we face the risk of HCD having told us that they won't approve it if we take them all out, so. Um, but maybe if we had the Middlefield Road properties, then they would. But I don't think we really have that option, but, but I would say to you, when, whenever we're going to go back and do another SEQA thing, we should include those Middlefield Road properties.
To be, to be honest, they, they. To be honest, they they talked to George and I, but we had already done our, started our sequo. And we told them at the time that it would have to be next time. It couldn't be done now. And so they did talk to two of us, but it was too late at the time and they were, they were told that.
Refresh my memory, early on in this price process, there was a discussion about how a city council could pick something. And if it was, if it was a low income and we, you could get around some of the rules, but not sequo. Is that correct? Or is there a way? Because I remember hearing this very early on when we were having discussions about spot zoning, remember? But at beginning, we were, we were focused on spot zoning. Can you do it? Can you not do it? And at that point, someone came forward and said there was a rule where we could vote a specific property if it came up before us. And that because if it was low income, it could be in. And I don't remember the specifics of that. Nobody remembers this.
So I wasn't here for that discussion.
Okay.
But what I can tell you is that many of the levers to circumvent sequo and in terms of adding additional density only apply if you already have a multifamily zoning to your property. So that might have been an issue.
Right. Just of adding that.
Okay. Okay, so stupid question. If we, and I probably shouldn't even ask this, but if we were to go and vote all these in at a later date, if we then did a sequel analysis and wanted to take them back out, could we take them back out and substitute other properties at a later date? And would that only be the only ones that would be, if none were developed, could we then pull it back out?
I don't think so.
I don't think so.
Well, there's this no net loss thing.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But that just means you replace with like number, right?
No, she knows.
Yeah, explain how that works. Like, could we do that? If we, if we voted something in tonight, we found, through further research, we decide we made a mistake and we wanted to substitute these four for other four that we found later, would we be able to do that?
So there, there's a couple caveats that are important to put out there. One is, once a developer files an application, you can't downzone.
Okay.
So if anybody comes in with an application on any of these sites and the council takes action later to change their mind, that project's already moving forward. There's also.
If somebody's doing a builder's remedy or only one that was been done underneath.
Yes, that would apply to a builder's remedy.
Okay.
But that wouldn't, the builder's remedy wouldn't apply if we have a certified housing element, so.
No, but if if we don't have it, if somebody says, hey, you know, you guys are with, you know, wishy washy. I'm just gonna do a builder's remedy. Here's my plans. I filed it under builder's remedy, then we would not be able to take that out.
Right, and Menlo Park can't.
Issues around it that we have to approve, but.
But Menlo Park.
Let me understand what you said, what you just said. You said that if if we later then decided to take these out, if one or more of them had developed, then they would then be okay. But if none of them develop or the ones that don't get developed, they could still be, we could still later vote to pull them back out. Is that correct?
But you would still have to go through a review with HCD that passed their muster in terms of.
Assumption there's a like for like. So let's say we found a like for like replacement in the meantime, you know?
I don't think that's gonna happen.
In short, yes, yes, it's possible.
No, it's.
Yes, it's complicated. Yes, it still involves sequel review.
Sure.
With HCD approval.
And a lot of time.
And a lot of time.
Yeah, a lot of time, yeah.
All right, let's move on.
I also want to raise a concern that HCD might come back and say that if you're concentrating the multifamily in one area and then removing it in an in another area, you're making it less dispersed. And that could be a problem. So it might not just be that you're adding sites to the Ravenswood area that you also have to add sites within another area of town to show that the distribution is fair.
Yeah, yeah, got it. Okay, all right, let's move on.
So what should we do next? Should we address this issue of the four versus one?
It's time to address this issue.
Expressing opinions? Because I do have one opinion I can give, which is that I believe in my mind that either all four are in or all four are out. I don't like the idea of pulling one of them out. I totally buy that there's no, that uh, I'm not buying all the traffic differences. So I think they're either all in or they're all out. That's just my opinion on that one.
I can agree with you on that.
So does everyone want to comment on that?
I'll make a comment because I had a different opinion. And the operative word there is had. When, when I looked at this from at the October second meeting, as we were discussing it, I felt particularly concerned about the traffic at, with the property at the corner because it's right there getting traffic on Ringwood and on Bay, and it's getting more backup on Bay. Um, and I felt like it would make the most sense to remove that property. And I was quite um concerned that the planning commission recommended removing all four. And I take that recommendation seriously. So I met with two planning commissioners and talked to them about why they came to that conclusion and what their concerns were. And both of those planning commissioners said, really, what they felt the most concerned with was the Ringwood property on the corner. And and while they did recommend removing all four, that they would, that the more they thought about it, because I asked them, well, if you remove, we're told by staff, if you remove all property, all the, all four of these, you're not gonna get HCD approval. So they said, well, yeah, we've heard that and we, and each of them is totally separate. This wasn't at one meeting where they were both there. I talked to each of them separately.
Talking brown act here, aren't you?
No, it's not a brown act.
No, because they weren't with you all.
And there's also two.
Yeah.
And there's five members on that committee.
Yeah.
So, but each of them independently said they would have, they they would now approve the other three and not approve the property on the corner. That's what they told me. So that influenced me. Um, and then I um, I met with the property owner in that property. And he basically very clearly said to me what he said to us tonight in a public comment, which is that he doesn't experience a traffic problem. That influenced me, so.
Yeah.
So.
And he wants to stay in.
No, 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 I understand. And and that's a different, that's an economic issue.
I took that.
Which he has every right to have that opinion, and I respect that. Um, but I'm trying not to be influenced by the economic issues because different people have different economic focuses. So I'm just saying, from a different opinion, I started out thinking we should remove the Ringwood property. And now I'm, I I'm not as confident.
Right.
All right, go ahead, Bill.
Uh, I spoke to several um, planning commission meeting, um, planning commissioners after the meeting. And uh, similar to your input. I got a different story out of them that they went along with the majority, but now they really feel that they made a mistake and they shouldn't have done what they had done. Um, which caused me to wonder whether or not, you know, everybody's saying, well, planning says, take it out. Of course, and I already said my comment about planning is appointed, not elected to represent you. And um, and they said, no, no, we, you know, we really, there was strong arguments, but you know, we voted to take it out, but we really didn't want to take it out. And if we had to do it again, we wouldn't take it out. So um, so that gives you a different perspective as well. Um, I I like you, Rick. I I think that the layout of of uh, the end properties at nine 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 um, and also on that first property that's on Frederick, you know, does cause a unique problem because of where the houses are and how things are laid out. And uh, and so that, I think we need to consider that. Because, you know, we've always said, and I've always said, I think that the main thing, what we want to do is protect the neighbors uh, with this, we've got to do what we got to do, but we want to do the best to mitigate the impact on the neighbors. And so if you look at that property, um, the pictures that she has here, um, or on one of the other charts, you know, the Frederick property is setback. Perhaps it was laid out similar that maybe it should have gone to Ringwood. I'm not sure. I'd have to ask the planning department. And this one was laid out to go to to also to Ringwood, but then went on to Bay Road. So you know, they're both.
Thank you.
Up together. And and I think even today, it's a little bit of a problem. But um, anyway, I just wanted to point those two things out.
Well, I think what we're trying to do uh is with the setbacks and the height, sidewall height, um, heights and step backs, uh, try to mitigate the impact of any development.
Let's use slightly different language, protect the neighbors.
Protect the neighbors, sorry, okay.
It's okay, it's the same thing.
Yeah.
Stacy, do you have anything to say on this?
Right.
Objective design standards is to protect the neighbors.
Can we stay on the Ringwood of the four versus?
I know, but that's, that's what I'm referring to.
Okay.
Mayor.
That's, yes.
Thanks, Mayor.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that uh you recall that we added to the standards that the frontage for nine 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 Ringwood would be treated as Bay Road.
Which would.
Would be treated as Bay Road.
As Bay Road.
That helps that issue.
That really does help, yes. But we we need to talk about the rear setbacks a little bit more because I, you know, hear what Carol's talking about in the sidewall heights and, you know, the pitched roofs and things and.
Agreed, we're gonna get to that. We're gonna get to that, I promise.
Yeah.
But let's stay. Let's stay on this one because right now I'm like, and force us to sit here and face this because this is what we don't want to talk about, and here we are. So on the table is there's four are either in or out, and and there was a decision on one. So we started with the first question, Ringwood in or out? And I took the position that I think that it's either all four or none.
Three of you said all four.
Yeah, I'm with you on that. And did we all agree on that?
Mm hmm.
All right, so you have an answer on one of our questions then?
Did we agree on that?
No.
No, the all or nothing.
Three people said all or nothing. We didn't vote on whether it was all or nothing.
I think that our, you know, nobody wants to.
Didn't vote for that.
Just the Ringwood, whether Ringwood would be separated is what we were talking about. So do we have an agreement on that or not?
Well, there were three votes that said yes. It was the you three girls.
Girls.
Okay.
Well, if there's three votes, then it's done.
Yeah.
It was three votes to treat them as a block.
Right.
Right.
To treat them as the same. So then the next question is, are they all in or are they all out?
Harder question.
So I, look, we're just talking amongst us to try to figure out the right thing. So we should share all of our thoughts, right?
Okay, fair enough, fair enough.
On the table.
Fair enough.
So another consideration I had, because Ringwood was the most challenged by traffic. But maybe this applies to all of them is, well, and I'm aware because George has told me that as part of the mitigation for Caltrain, this intersection is to be signalized. Isn't that right? Isn't that what you told me? No, I thought for electrification. Was it, no, no.
Menlo Park is.
There was a, there was a mitigation for this intersection.
So what I've pointed out and is in the ISM and D is that Menlo Park has in their capital improvement plan uh, a project to signalize this intersection. And that was a recommendation.
That wasn't a.
And that, that was also a recommendation, a recommendation, not a mitigation from the traffic analysis on these sites.
Okay, so, fine, so my assumption was wrong, but the end result is the same.
We got lucky.
One possibility would be to say, well, we'll put these in with the condition that the, that the uh, like, that the intersection gets signalized.
That's what I said.
I don't know if that makes sense, but I'm just telling you a thought.
Well, we can't put a condition on.
Earlier.
We can't put the condition on something we're voting on based on that Menlo Park is gonna do it. They said they have it in their plan. They said they're gonna put it in their plan. We have to trust it. We should lobby them the same as.
Well, that's it.
Stacy, Stacy brought that up about we should lobby them to work and come up with a good bicycle plan and stuff like that.
Based on what Steve said, that's not really.
He says it's not a big deal. Right, that's correct.
Right. So I, I, I don't see how we can take them out of the housing element and uh, get anything approved. I mean, we are so skinny as it is. I mean, I know we have some uh, padding, I guess, in the RENA numbers, but not in AFMH.
No.
I too will just, I want, just what I'm thinking is that I'm really troubled by this. I do not like voting against what our planning department said. I, these would not be the properties that I would, that I would pick to be on this. But here we are, and if we don't vote something in, we're going to start a lot of penalties that are right there breathing down our neck. So I'm having a really hard time with the decision. And I hear people say, you know, do the right thing, but the right thing, in this case, you have to weigh two pieces. You have to weigh the individual rights of the people whose houses, and believe me, that breaks my heart, I hear you. Um, but at the same time, you have to weigh the fact that if we start to incur fifty thousand dollars a month, we're putting the entire city's financial stuff in jeopardy. We have the risk of losing money for streets. There's a whole bunch of hammers and more coming. So they're continuing to pass laws. I mean, we have people watching them and telling us on a weekly basis, oh, they added another one. So there's a, there's a lot of laws going and they're closing all the loopholes. And we've been chasing the loopholes all along, and they're all being shut down. So I feel like I'm torn between making a decision, which I don't like, versus jeopardizing the whole city in terms of our financials. So I, I'm having a hard time. Go ahead.
Um, so uh, the, the majority of the council said all in or all out. Um, and if that's the case, then I'm gonna move that they're all in. So I'd like to make a motion that they're all in, so that we can move on.
Has everyone had a chance to say what they want to say on this or before we have a motion?
All in.
So we're gonna get a second. Yeah, motions can't be made without a second.
Yeah, that's right, I made a motion.
So Stacy didn't have her chance to talk about it.
That's what I was trying to say, we didn't have a chance to all talk.
Bill's fast. I mean, I think I'm with everyone else that it, this isn't a thing that we've done lightly. And this has been a very slow process to identify all these lots and try and figure out how do we make the, how do we do the, you know, the least to be compliant and have the smallest impact on our, on our residents. Um, I think what we're all struggling with is that HCD and staff have been like explicitly clear with us over and over and over and over that if we remove these lots, we will not, HCD has told us that we will, they will not certify this housing element. And, you know, we could dare them and see if they really meant it. And I don't know that we want elected officials playing chicken with the state on this one because I think that they're uh, looking for, you know, we're Atherton, they're looking for nice targets to uh, come after. So I'm, I, I, nobody is having fun doing this, so.
A second, I.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes or no?
I think it would do a disservice to the rest of the town if we did not include them in our housing element, even though it, it feels like a lot of the um, kid safety, bike safety, a lot of that not being in our control makes me very anxious. Um, so, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at on this one. How's that?
Don't move anything forward.
I know, but I, you know.
Somebody has to make a decision.
Or does anybody want to express any more ideas?
I don't care.
I'm not gonna second it.
They moved to take it out. I don't care, one way or the other, it's in or out.
Yes, George, throw me a safety line here, please.
So Councilmember DeGolio talked about a condition with respect to the bicycle safety. We got some sort of general consensus and direction of staff, hey, you should be do something about the bicycle safety, bicycle master plan, et cetera, talk with Menlo Park. You can't condition. You can't condition, as Councilmember Widmer indicated, that Menlo Park will do something. You can't condition it in the housing element. But you can condition the motion that you would support it if the council supported working with Menlo Park, funding if necessary, to the extent the council would approve transportation, bicycle safety improvements, signalization of that intersection.
Okay. All right. It's like George said.
And that puts some weight behind your motion.
That's fair.
Yeah. But how does that?
That's good. That's good.
I mean, that sounds good, but how, what happens and then are we saying they're in or out or are we putting them conditionally in?
No, you're, you're saying they're in, but you're giving, it's conditioning, giving direction to staff.
Giving, yes.
That they have.
Which is exactly what.
And that's what we've been saying.
This is one of the hardest, this, this is the hardest decision that we are making, that we have made. And I've been on council 16 years and this is the hardest, hardest motion that I'm going to second his motion with the conditions that we focus on the bike safety and the intersection at the corner of Bay and Ringwood. And, which is something that I acknowledged earlier. But I think we have got, our back is against the wall. It is not something that we want to do. We would not choose to do it. I truly believe that we can mitigate a lot of the impacts. And there's landscaping, there's setbacks, there's, you know, this is not something that's going to happen like tomorrow, that this is all going to be developed and there's going to be 120, 150 cars all, all of a sudden there. May not, may not.
So I second your emotion. Your, your amendment.
My amendment. Okay.
Tell me I have a vote.
For a second.
I think, I think Mona is talking.
Yes, I, I wanted to make one point. If we can just modify the motion slightly, I, I don't want it to sound like we are deferring mitigation because that would violate law and we can't do that. Instead, if the motion is conditioning this approval upon direction to staff to add, to enhance opportunities for traffic improvements. Because as far as the ISM and D analyzed, you know, traffic has been analyzed. There would be, you know, project specific requirements if and when development is proposed. But I just want to be mindful that we're not sounding as though we are deferring mitigation of traffic impacts to some future date without identifying what that's going to look like.
Okay. George understands.
I understand, but I, I just want to make sure that we're focused on that.
All right.
Does it need to be formulated as a motion or do you have enough for the motion?
You have the motion. Just take a vote, please.
Let's take a vote.
Call for the vote.
Call for a vote.
All those in favor?
All those in favor.
Aye.
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 Okay. There's four votes. Okay. Move on. That's it. Three.
Now we've got four.
Did you have a statement?
There was four votes.
Oh, there was?
Waited to go last.
You want to vote whether or your.
Yeah, no, I'll go with you.
All right, fine. Okay.
Better to be unanimous.
You need to move over.
It is. Okay. So sorry. I'm so, so sorry.
You know, we could be here all night. Just take this much time on everyone.
So let's talk about these types and setbacks.
So this is just the summary table that we, that I pointed out earlier. Once we get through the development standards, this table will be updated, which, as you can tell, the development standards still appear to be a tiny little bit in flux. So.
Hard time hearing.
Why we haven't.
So I have a question.
Sure.
Is it true that everything that's marked yellow is inaccurate? Like for, let's just take what jumps out at me. Ministerial review. Under R1A, there's no ministerial review, right?
Uh, ministerial review means by right. So it doesn't require planning commission hearing. So that needs to be changed to yes, because there is ministerial review in R1A.
There is ministerial review in R1A?
Yes. The alternative would be discretionary review, where a permit has, is at the discretion of town planner, city manager, planning commission or city council.
Right. But I thought there's not discretionary review.
You have the right to build your home so long as it conforms to the standards. If it doesn't.
Got it. Got it. So everything that's yellow is wrong, which is what Stacy said.
So I'm going to move on from this.
So you're going to revise this after we've finished.
Yeah. When do you think it'd be ready for us to come in and look at it?
Tomorrow or Friday.
Friday is the best day.
Friday's the best day for me.
All right. I'll be here for Friday.
It's good.
Okay. The town will promote housing development?
So this is the next topic area for the Gilmore House.
Okay.
So the first question was whether or not we should be changing this language for promote housing development. And there was a suggestion that it be changed to consider. My feedback was that that was not going to fly with HCD. I think promote is fine. So I think it's worth leaving.
Can live with promote housing development on the Gilmore site as long as it's up to four units.
Okay, which, and I want to, I want to bring that topic up. Right. So then the next.
Wait, you can't bring that topic up.
Go ahead.
Yeah. I remember that.
For it to ask for reconsideration.
When this came, yeah, I, I asked George on Thursday that I wanted to bring this back up for another vote anyway. I voted for it.
You can bring it up.
Yeah, I'm allowed to bring it back up. And, you know, I'm thinking about it and thinking about the input that we got from the, from the residents on that night as well as on this night. I do feel that, you know, originally we said we would do maybe 10 units. And then we said, well, what would we really be? And the, and the words came back, it'd be five. You know, five or more. And five was the number that was put in by, by Brittany and her team because of the fact that then it would be a density bonus thing. And there was a lot of discussion back and forth. I don't mean to take up a lot of time. And, yeah, it was very late and so I just wanted it to be done. And so I voted with the guys to make it four. But honestly, I don't believe that it should be four, up to four. I think it should be five or more. And so I'm changing my vote to five or more. We can take a revote, but I believe we have an obligation to show the town that we have some skin in the game, not saying we're going to develop it because we have a chief living there. And we may choose to always have a city manager or, or police chief living there. That's our choice. We have to decide as a council that we're going to develop it. But the opportunity to be developed, I think, should be there. And so I'm changing my vote to support that number. And I think it's the right thing to do for the town and for the other people who are being affected by this.
Didn't we have an abstention in that vote also?
No, no. He, he, he voted for it. There were, I don't know if there was three or four of us that voted for it.
No, there were three that voted for us, one negative and one abstention.
Okay, fine. So he has a right to.
I have a right to change my vote.
To reconsider.
Because I was in the pos.
No, it's a motion to reconsider.
Right.
Okay. So we have a motion on the table and I, do I have to second that motion? Because I sure, I sure feel very strongly about this one.
You made the original vote. You made the original motion.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So can I second his motion to reconsider? I will second his motion to reconsider this topic. Roll call.
No, we get to speak on the issue first.
All right. All right.
Okay. The reason that I'm opposed to this is that the deed says that if there is any housing in the park other than incidental housing, and that's exactly how it's worded, that the deed will change from going to the town of Atherton to the trustees of Stanford University. That's what the deed says. I, and, and there's a judgment. I believe that one house, which we currently have, is incidental. Uh, I believe that four houses might not be incidental. It might be incidental, but I personally believe that five houses is not incidental. So I am 100% opposed to this motion.
And I could make a comment, but my understanding is that the city manager went. And, and I think Rick, you were on the call with myself when we talked to the people from Stanford and they said that they didn't challenge it or put in a claim at that time and they felt that they had no right to.
So I can, I can address that. Yes.
Yeah, please.
There was that conversation with Stanford and they did say they had no property interest in it. But the city attorney advised as well that while their sta, their staff don't really have the ability to bind the trustees or the university.
Right.
But that was their direction back to the town. That doesn't prevent any other challenges from coming up. We could still face a legal challenge to it, but they've said they have no property interests, but they can't bind the university in that statement.
But at the same time, like I said earlier, we don't ever have to develop it at all. Right? It's just a guideline of what we could do.
Mona speaking.
Well, she spoke one over me.
Sorry. I apologize. Um, I did want to add one other point. So the, so Stanford, the trustees, in accordance with California Civil Procedure 885.030, in an effort to essentially perfect their right in, to have the property as a fee contingent in the deed to the park, should have exercised that within 30 years of the deed being granted to the town and did not do so. So there is a legal argument that they don't have a right any longer. The, the town could consider seeking a court order to either declare our rights in it or to take a validation action, which essentially affirms that we now have this free and clear. But that has not been completely concluded. But as a matter of law and because they didn't exercise their rights within the statute of limitations, there is an argument that we could proceed.
So I have a question about that. May I ask Mona? So what would it take for us to petition the trustees and, you know, get that cleared up so that we don't have this sort of Damocles hanging over our head possibly?
Right, exactly. And that was the intent with the request to get Stanford to essentially explain in writing. It came from high level staff as opposed to the trustees, which is helpful, but ideally it would have come from a resolution or some sort of formal action of the trustees reaffirming that they have no interest. But it is possible that we attempt a validation action to essentially perfect our property interests in this property.
Thank you. I mean, not that I want to develop the park with housing. My opinion is that Atherton has one park. One. And that's Holbert Palmer Park. It is our one and only park in our entire town. We have this beautiful park-like town center, which we intentionally built as a meeting place. And it has become more of a there, there for the residents. But the park, to play at the park, to be at the park, is, it's not a housing site. And to think that you're going to develop, you know, 10 housing, housing on that Gilmore property site, I think it would just ruin the park in so many ways. But I just, and to have maybe four units, who's going to live there? Who, who are we going to rent these to? It's not like to the general public necessarily. And what, I, I just think it's very poorly thought out and not reasonable at all.
Well, I'd like to make a point. In my view, this particular piece of property has never been used for recreation. It's been a house, it's been used for workforce housing. In this case, the police, who is, I think, also considered the ranger. There's some sort of thing about the person managing the park. It has never been park. We're not going and taking swing sets. This is a, this has always been grandfathered. It's always been housing. So we're doing a like-for-like grandfathered housing. It's located at the very edge of the park where it could have its own private entrance and you wouldn't even see it. You turn, you, you pull off the park, you wouldn't even see it. It's not even there. And there's nobody immediately around it. And more importantly, this is the only land in the entire city that we could pencil low income housing. Because we can put the property in for the way Stanford and other places do. And we could, we could pay, then all of a sudden you can actually do workforce housing. And yes, we do have a need for workforce housing. It could be the people that manage the park. It could be city staff. It could be, you know, firemen, it could be teachers. We, but this actually is a real need for our own community. We, we own this. We would control the development. So we would, we would be able to do exactly with input from our community, design exactly what we want for our workforce housing. This is a real need we have. So I think this, to me, that should be in at the full 10, the SEQA that we did it for, it's 10 per acre. So that's not 10 because it's not a full acre. But I think it should be in and it should be an option because when you come halfway through and we have to find other properties, I think we should be rezoning our own property before we're zoning private property.
The, the comment that Brittany had put in would say five or more. And so I'm comfortable with five or more, but I'm not comfortable with saying it's 10.
But when you say five or more, I mean, would, would you do 50?
No, it's RM 10. It's RM 10. It's RM 10, but, but we're saying five or more. Five is.
I have a question and I asked this at the last meeting. We control every step of this process. So this is a housing element policy document. So if we later change our mind and want to do six or something, we can do that, right? Because, so I'm kind of, I hear we have to have a number, but does it matter what the number is? Because we, as we get into the weeds of planning it, we might see a plan that has a six unit, you know, single story, something magical design that really fits all of our criteria without jeopardizing the park. So I'm kind of wondering, like, we're spending a lot of time on this and does it, does it matter? When I think what we are trying to say is we do want to promote housing development on the Gilmore House site, once we've clarified a lot of the legal issues and, you know, all of that.
I'm going to refer back to what I said earlier in that the RM 10 sites do not contribute to RENA currently.
Yeah.
But if we are in a situation where we need to look to the RM 10 properties for affordable housing development, then it does matter. So does it matter right now in the context of the current programs? No, not, not immensely. We do have to put in a number. Otherwise, my recommendation would be to leave this and move on for, deal with it when you actually have a feasibility study and you know what your unit targets are. In the future, if you do a feasibility study and you direct staff to pursue that feasibility study, you can set the limitations then. What, based on what comes back with the feasibility study, you have another opportunity to determine what the numbers are. The numbers might change once you understand how much the costs are associated with it. So there is going to be some flexibility between what's desired and what ultimately is practical if anything ever moves forward.
So all you're recommending is just leave it as an RM 10 POF?
POS.
Putting a number in there sometimes.
Can I make a point? I really want to go back at what you said. One of the things we're doing right here, which we've heard all our residents say, that the properties that we just put in, those four properties are going to be developed at million dollar houses. That's not the intention of the affirmative housing. And yeah, we're doing a little thing there and yes, it will count. But it's only going to be a matter of time that they're going to say, where's your real affirmative housing? This is our only, our only affirmative housing. This is the only house that you can pencil.
That's not true. That's not true, Diana.
The numbers are such that it costs so much for the land that we're going to have a very hard time developing.
We don't know that.
We know how much the land costs.
I know, but some people already own the land.
To further drill down on Councilmember Holland's question about, does it matter what it says, development of the four units? Because we control the process. We could always change it later. The, the issue for the council is this is a policy document. So you will have council members, future council members, current, future council members that will say, that's our policy. We don't want to. We don't want to change it. So that's a hurdle to overcome if you have something like up to four or five or more.
Good. Up to four.
Up to four.
I just want to.
See, you can do four if just in a regular property with SB nine. So you're not making a multifamily. So I don't even sound it's multi-family. If it's not at least five.
You can't do an SB nine because we, you can't be owner occupied when you are this town of Atherton.
Yeah.
We got somebody living there right now.
Yeah. Um.
Anyway.
All right. So we need to take a vote for.
Like to take, make a motion that we, um.
No, it's, oh, you've got a motion on the floor.
So the motion was to continue the discussion, which we did.
No, it's a motion to reconsider.
Okay.
So, right. Do votes to reconsider.
I want to say one thing before we vote, which is, um, Diana said, this is going to be in the corner where there's less than an acre in a house. Nobody will see it. That's ridiculous. It's gonna, if you put ten properties, ten housing units in there, it's absolutely going to be seen. Uh, if you put four, it's, I mean, there's no question. We're, we're going to get an enormous amount of pushback. Saying exactly what Elizabeth said, which is we have only one park. There's people that love this park and that is going to change it. So I think if you put, I still think four is, in my mind, is the maximum that would be incidental. So I, I, I think it's wrong to reconsider this.
Okay, well.
Are you going to?
I'm in favor of reconsidering because we're already doing that.
Okay, let's take a vote on reconsidering it.
We just did. Two against three.
Okay.
All right, now make a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, um, uh, do what we said before, uh, to seek to complete development of up to four units of housing, uh, ending of December twenty twenty-eight at the park and change the text to read to promote housing development on the Gilmore House site.
And can I make an amendment?
Yes.
That we, uh, direct.
Oh, sorry. Keep it. Yes, you know, keep, keep the slide, keep the, um, promote housing development at the Gilmore House site on the town owned Holbert Palmer Park and seek to complete development of up to four units of housing by the end of December twenty twenty-eight, which is the end of our housing cycle.
Okay, and, and my amendment would be that we direct staff to pursue the perfection of the deed to eliminate the possibility of uh, the property going to Stanford University.
I accept that, uh, addition. So that's a motion. Do you have a second?
Take a vote.
Yeah, second.
Okay.
Okay, let's take a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
All not in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Yeah, nay.
So three.
Great. Let's say, make another motion.
Okay, so I'll make the motion that we leave it as the, uh, ten units, which is what's on there and then we decide what to do with it later.
Well, it's not on there, ten.
Make the amendment.
I'd like to, I'd like to make an amendment that is, is five or more. And we add in Rick's amendment.
Agreed on Rick's amendment.
About making sure that we very quickly go and work with Stanford to make sure that this is copacetic with them that, uh, that, and if it's not, then, then we don't do anything. Obviously, we don't want to give the part, so.
So it'd be five up or up to ten?
Five or more.
Five or more.
Okay, I'm not going to say ten.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. So I don't understand the difference of that, but okay. Um, do we have a second for that?
I'm going to second that.
Okay, so let, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Let's move on.
I oppose. I wholeheartedly oppose.
I understand. Okay, I understand. And I understand the reason why.
Think you've seen people come out on the housing thing, just wait.
Agree with you.
Wait till they figure this out. This is what you're going to do. Yeah.
You know, we'll see.
Okay, so moving on to the zoning code amendments for RM ten. Uh, these were the items that I had highlighted. The first one, uh, is just removing R one B as a typo. I don't think that there's any discussion there. The next one is another typo correcting the reference height above thirty feet to twenty-eight feet. Um, it does sound like there's potentially some discussion to be had regarding the sidewall height. So obviously if that changes, we would then follow up and correct this to reflect that. Um, the next point I have here is clarifying if the ten foot front setback reduction and swap with rear yard is for all properties or only for the narrowest properties, which would include twenty-three oak wood. So if necessary, can bring up the development standards?
Is ringwood considered narrow?
Sorry, oak wood.
Is, is ringwood considered?
No.
What are these sections? I mean, you've just got one line there, like the first bullet, but what is section seventeen point three? We don't know what you're talking about.
Well, you have to look in the book and it's, um.
Wait, so are we doing seventeen point three five oh three oh?
It's on page.
I was just a typo, so we all agreed on that one.
So I moved past that to the ten foot front setback reduction. So this had to deal with the, uh, discussion on the rear yard. So let me bring that up.
I've called. Okay.
It's on page thirteen of fifty-one.
I'm just bringing up the PDF to share. One second.
The sidewalls?
Are we talking, so it's page fifteen of attachment two?
It's thirteen.
Thirteen.
Okay.
Are we talking side?
Maybe subtracted from the front yard.
Three oh B.
If an identical amount is added to the required.
Second paragraph, yeah.
You know, I'm, I'm, I'm going to for that because.
Well, the issue is.
It brings the front setback smaller.
Twenty feet.
I have a question. Yes, that relates to this, since this was my idea.
Three-story building.
From the bank.
What was your idea?
It's ten foot.
It would be twenty-six feet from the.
The what?
No, 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 no.
Yeah.
No, 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 no. Here.
We already agreed that you only have the thirty foot.
Would allow you to build sixty foot.
No.
No, she said she wanted.
Okay, so the question that I've raised is here with the up to ten feet may be subtracted from the front yard required setback if an identical amount is added to the required rear yard setback. And when we had discussed this as an opportunity or an option, we were looking at the model of twenty-three oak wood.
Yeah, we have a couple. We have two, two conversations going on and it can't, we can't hear.
Brittany, what were you saying?
So I was just providing context for the discussion that we had had on this item where we were looking at the development model of twenty-three oak wood, uh, with the test fit, uh, development. And we were addressing the allowance of, uh, the twenty-five foot rear yard and bumping that minimum up to thirty-five feet, which we did. But then there was added discussion about wanting to try and create an additional incentive for them to provide a forty-five foot rear yard if they're allowed to move forward ten feet at the front of the property. And so this provision, the way that it's been added, addresses all properties, not just twenty-three oak wood, but all of the RM ten sites. And so the question is, was that the intent?
Not good, no.
Or was it just meant to apply to twenty-three oak wood or narrow lots that have that configuration?
I have a question.
Stacy.
Um, the rear setback for the R one A adjacent for all the Bay Road lots.
Yes.
That would be fifty, but a normal R one A lot would be sixty. Like a single family home would be a sixty foot setback or is it fifty?
It's sixty feet unless we talked about they have this provision from nineteen forty-six that allows them to reduce it.
Okay, and that's ringwood.
Uh, that's Bay properties.
All of them.
R one Bs.
Well, they're not R one B, are they? They're just.
Everything is R one.
R, R one B properties that have small.
So essentially, okay, we were talking apples and oranges here because you, you brought up the ringwood, uh, the Bay Road properties.
Yeah.
But she's talking about the oak wood properties and this, uh, additional, uh, ten foot setback.
Yeah, I, I'm getting to my point.
Okay, so good.
I had proposed this shifting program because all of these lots that we're considering right now are facing properties that have a much smaller setback. And our multifamily rear setback right now is reduced from a single family home. And so what I had wanted to do was create a program where that could get shifted forward to preserve a single family-esque rear setback for all of these lots. So we could try and get to sixty, which is the thing we're hearing across the board. Given that for the lots that we are looking at right now, they are all looking at properties that have a twenty foot, a ten foot, a much smaller.
Across the street.
Across the street.
Sure.
Next door. So it doesn't, it won't look weird. And so I, because of these specific lots that we're looking at or facing back to Atherton residents, trying to preserve that. You know, here, listening to the feedback we were hearing, that was an idea that I had proposed.
Yeah.
I have a question about the language because I'm also now hearing that people are worried that if this is applied to other lots, which is not what we're talking about tonight, but in the future, could we have language in there that is reflective of my logic that because it is facing properties that has a small setback already, it can be, this program can be applied when it is, you know, contextually relevant versus like if we're considering somewhere wholly different in the future.
I love that.
As.
She's, she's talking about if they're across the street from a smaller front yard setback property.
Right. Yes.
That would.
Did my question make sense?
Okay.
It did. To me. Would that language be allowed to future proof if we have to be looking at other lots, which I really hope we don't have to do, but if we do?
Um, as a cleanup or as a modification tonight?
I don't know. That's my question.
Yeah, the indication that I'm getting to my right is that it would be an effort that we would want to do as a cleanup.
Okay. Okay, and a cleanup, just process wise, would be just normal public noticing and not like wild SEQA shenanigans or anything like.
Correct, but it would require, because the way that we did SEQA for these standards is, is more permissive. This, what was analyzed under SEQA is more permissive than what we're actually adopting. So we've granted ourselves some flexibility there, even though we didn't with, uh, density.
Okay.
Um, okay, sorry, next question.
Yeah, um, one of the things I don't think we, we considered, some of our properties, actually I think three of them, uh, border on another jurisdiction. And, um, is there any consideration or should we have any consideration with regards to the setbacks being equal to or adjusted to what their setbacks are?
I think that's what Stacy's kind of getting at.
Yeah, it's different words, yeah.
So it sounds like cleanup ordinance.
So, yeah, because you have to look, there's three, I mean, there's three pieces of property that, that, that butt up against another jurisdiction.
So in that.
That have different setback requirements than we have.
So in that situation, the different setback requirements are generally going to be less.
That's what I'm.
Yeah, right. That's what I'm saying. And so ours would then be adjusted downward or we just leave them the same as they would be anywhere else in town or what?
So that is something that you would want us to come back with analyzing as a cleanup issue?
Or would that be something that has to go to the planning commission?
It would definitely, any ordinance that comes back to adjust these controls would have to go back to planning commission first.
Okay.
For recommendation.
All right, okay.
So, and when you do cleanup, I don't understand what that means. So that, we're submitting it like this, but we'll commit to fix the wording later? Are we allowed to do that? What does?
Well, there are minor changes that we can fix now, right?
Is this a minor change?
But if there's direction that is more substantive, that the council would like further direction and analysis.
So we could make this semantic.
We would have to come back.
Yeah.
I have a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
Can, can you bring this slide down so we can see the image above the setback? Okay, so here's my concern with this exact issue and, and on Bay Road is a good example. It's true that the properties across the street have, I think, fifteen or twenty foot setback. They're one-story buildings. If you take this, what, if, if we move thirty feet setback from the front, ten feet to the back, then that increases the back setback to sixty feet, which I think is good. Maybe we should set the setback setback at sixty feet and not be taking ten feet from the front. But my worry about the front is if you look at this image, you can see where it shows the thirty-four foot line. And as the maximum, uh, the twenty-eight foot line is at the setback, which is either ten or twenty feet, or it could be somewhere in between based on the language we have. It's, it's moving up to ten feet from the front to the back. But if you moved all ten feet from the front to the back, then the front setback would be twenty feet from the right of way. And you could move, i- if you could go up to thirty-four feet, if you move it back six feet, right? It's one foot for one foot. So you start at twenty-eight feet. Six feet back, you can, you can angle it up as she shows to twenty-eight to, to thirty-four feet.
Right.
But you could just start that thirty-four feet at twenty-six feet from the right of way. So what you're going to do then is you're going to have a three-story building, this thirty-four square, thirty-four feet high. You're going to have three stories. You're not going to have two stories in the dormer window as the third story, which is what we were trying to get to. You're going to actually have a straight up three-story building in Atherton that's twenty-six feet from the right of way. I don't think that's Atherton. And it's, looks really different from the one-story buildings that are across the street. There, where the setback is the same, I agree, but it's a three-story building and you can drive around and look at three-story buildings. There's plenty of them around, but that, that's a decision to totally change the character of Atherton.
Well, we're not building these everywhere.
Well, we're not building them everywhere, but, but what we do here is a policy that if HCD requires us to authorize or rezone for multi-story, you know, multi-family buildings throughout Atherton, which I think is likely, we're going to apply whatever we do here or there unless we change it.
Yeah, I, you know, I, I agree with where Rick is coming from. Um, I, I wouldn't want to have, you know, a square building that starts twenty feet off. You know, that'd be massive, a three-story building. Um, you know, we're using the six-foot setback to get up to thirty-four feet. Uh, you know, I think that we need to keep the sidewall where we are. I don't have a problem moving closer to the street twenty feet. But, but if you're, you know, we need to have some words in there that says, but you, you know, you can't just go straight up thirty-four feet.
Well, I think R one A says that sidewall can't be more than twenty-eight feet.
Yeah. Can I make a suggestion on this one? Because this was an add from the last ordinance, so I think we can remove it. Because it's, was an add from the last item. We can remove it and bring it all back as a more complete picture as a change down the line.
As a what?
A change.
As a corrective change down the line, like we were talking about. So remove the ten-foot swap program because it is a little bit confusing in how it's going to apply. Just remove it entirely.
But we're going to.
And then do a correction, corrective ordinance.
Sixty-foot setback.
I mean, another option would be to just say the maximum sidewall is twenty-eight feet. You can get up to the peak at thirty-four feet if you angle it up at one foot.
I agree, I agree. And that's.
Don't we have that? I'm sorry.
Which is the current.
Thought that's what we agreed to.
No, but it allows you, if you set it back another six feet to
Based on our one.
Thirty-four foot wall, sidewall.
Yes.
So.
We don't want to do.
Well, I'm sorry, I'm, maybe I'm not. Maybe I'm not understanding, because I hear what I hear what you're, the worry about the box. I don't fully understand what the ten-for-ten front rear setback matters because you could still have a box.
Thirty feet or thirty-six feet.
Right. So thirty-six box is okay, but twenty-six, okay.
Yeah, that's, that's the only issue there.
R1A says if you.
I mean, the bigger issue may be the box.
Okay.
Maybe we just require the maximum sidewall is twenty-eight feet and they they can step it up and do the dormer window. No prob, I don't have a problem with that.
Yeah. I would do that. And then keep the front back thing because that does allow relief for some of the residents.
Are we going to change the rear setback minimum?
You can't change that this evening. That's a substantive change.
We can't, I can't change that this evening?
No.
I'd like to, but because right now it's fifty, right?
But we could leave in this ten, which would enable it to be its.
Expanded to sixty.
And then just keep the sidewalls because that was a change.
And keep the sidewall at twenty-eight feet.
Right.
Not allow a sidewall to go up to thirty-four feet.
Right.
So we're going to leave in the ten?
I think that's a better solution myself.
Okay.
I mean, the risk is you could still have a twenty-eight-foot sidewall at twenty-six feet off the right-of-way, but to me, then you have the dormer window and that's more attractive than going up thirty-four feet, which is clearly a three-story building.
Right. Okay.
Okay.
Let's move on.
So do you have direction?
No.
We're just wrinkling.
Yeah.
His brain's not.
Articulate.
Come on, George, you need to pay attention.
Okay. Um, so we're not changing the minimum rear yard requirements with the exception of changing the intervals by one foot, which we haven't come back to yet.
Haven't gotten to that yet.
But I just want to throw that caveat in there.
But that's what you've shown on chart.
Generally not changing the fifty-foot or the thirty-five-foot, correct?
Say that again?
We're not changing the upper limit of the fifty-foot or the thirty, lower limit of the thirty-five-foot in the discussion right now.
That would be a substitute.
No.
Okay, but we.
But we're enabling this additional ten feet to be moved from the front setback to the back.
We're keeping that.
Because that's more protective of the neighbors.
So we are keeping that and it applies to all RM ten properties.
Correct.
Right.
Okay.
Correct.
And then relative to this question about the sidewall height and the clarification, if it's necessary, that that was intended to include this forty-five-degree angle plane. So if you, as a developer, chose not to use this forward space and set your building back in six feet, you could guess have a thirty-four-foot plane.
No.
No.
You can go from twenty-eight feet to thirty-four feet with the one foot for one foot.
Right, but that.
But if you, but the highest the sidewall can be is twenty-eight feet. So if you choose to start your building at, not at twenty feet, but at twenty-five feet or twenty-six feet, you can still, the 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 highest sidewall you can have is twenty-eight feet.
Just in the front setback area.
Yes.
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 In the front setback.
And then in the side and rear setback areas, that would be twenty-one.
You'd have like a mansard roof then instead of a.
Well, no, I thought we, it would be twenty-eight.
No, right now.
Twenty-one, twenty-one is not for.
That's a sidewall.
For two, ten-foot.
He said twenty-one for the side.
Front's a side.
Side, the sidewall starts at twenty-one. I mean, that, actually, I think it's the maximum sidewall height that you've got.
Twenty-one.
Can I please ask the members of the public to be quiet? It's really hard to focus and get this right so that we don't have to keep coming back and revising this. Thank you. Where did we leave off?
Well, we're just looking at the at the illustrations and it looks like the sidewall is twenty-one. And then it can go up to the maximum height of thirty-four.
Right. With the one-for-one ratio.
And the expectation is that the only way that you are ever going to get up to that thirty-four-foot volume is if you are in a pitched roof. Okay.
And we want to encourage pitched roofs.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay.
At one point, we said that any, any habitable space in that third story would be.
Free.
FAR free.
Yeah. Can make a little attic.
So if you want to do a contemporary building, you have to do a flat roof at twenty-eight feet.
Yeah. Yeah.
That's what we're saying.
Mm-hmm.
It's not a design constraint that they're going to.
It is. And I raised that concern at the last hearing when we talked about going from thirty to twenty-eight. I was okay with going down to twenty-eight because you could still get the third-story volume in a pitch. If you have a flat roof, that does not account for the ten-foot floor space that I was trying to get at with a three-story volume.
But.
But but could you just?
Does R1A, does R1A allow a thirty-four-foot flat roof building?
Not without an exception and only for a tower feature.
Okay.
Thank you. Is this a substantive change or no?
Not really.
Could be considered a, it could be considered a substantive change, but more concerning is it could be considered a constraint on multifamily development by HCD.
That we want to. But let me ask you a question. If the front, at the front sidewall, the maximum is twenty-eight feet. So you can go up to thirty-four feet with the slant. Then on the side sidewall, it's twenty-one feet. And right now, it allows you to go up to thirty-four feet with the same one-for-one slant.
Right, as a buildable envelope.
As a buildable.
Not the roof line.
And they could, they they could move that whole wall back and go straight up to thirty-four feet if they were thirteen feet back, right?
Correct, and if they did that, then they would lose the leasable, developable area that's forward of that massing.
Mm-hmm.
Right.
Yeah.
Could they do a, like?
A wedding cake?
Wedding cake.
Yes.
This allows that.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay, next.
We can't say next, they need a decision on this.
Well.
Well, I thought we were all in agreement now.
I don't know, Brittany, do you feel that you got what you needed there?
No.
So they're saying no, so.
So let me just ask a question. If the, if the front sidewall maximum is twenty-eight feet. Right, under any condition, they can go to thirty-four at the peak, but the sidewall can't go above twenty-eight. Then you have the house that's twenty-eight and it goes like this, and then the side is twenty-one feet. And it goes like this. Could.
Need an architect to sketch it.
They would have to design within that envelope.
I guess it's thirteen feet. I I feel less concerned about it on the side than in the front. I don't know, what what's the developable area issue? You you want to make it so it's economic to do the developments.
I would think the side is closer to someone's house and the front is closer to the street. So I would think the side would be more for the neighbors. So for me, the side would be more of an issue.
But you're starting at twenty-one, not twenty-eight, so it's going back.
Yeah, and so I think the twenty-one is a good sidewall height and then to pitch pitch up.
Yeah, and and the only issue is, well, what if they moved the side back in that process? They, the sidewall could start at above twenty-one if they're going in.
On a foot-by-foot basis.
They're also getting, you know, further away.
Lose out on a lot of space.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you'd lose out on a lot of space.
But this is what we, what you have shown here is what we discussed on the twenty.
That's what I heard.
Okay, yeah, that's fine, no problem.
That that's not what was directed, so if I'm incorrect.
No.
Clarification could be helpful.
You're on.
I think that, I think to change the furnace of correction, that's easy to do.
Yeah. It's the, it's the front that's.
So the side would stay twenty-one foot.
Yeah.
Steppable back. And if it's pushed all the way back, it could be the taller building because it's farther away. But in the front, sorry, in the front, it's twenty-eight foot regardless of where you are.
And the rear is also twenty-one.
And the rear's twenty-one.
Is that?
Except if you step it back and have a greater setback from the.
The setback in the back is already big.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know, but you you can do a foot-for-foot.
Yeah.
It's in our, it's in our ordinances.
The twenty-six feet, it's fifty.
Does that sound acceptable?
I hope so.
I do too.
All right.
Yeah. Like I said, the only concern is whether HCD will look at it as a constraint.
Right.
Did we change?
Maybe they won't be able to understand it.
Wait, so did we change anything or we just, we did? Yeah, the.
The front.
The front is not allowed to have a sidewall up to thirty-four feet. Okay.
It's okay.
Meaning if you look at the image on the left, if they pushed that wall, that dotted line, all the way back, they still couldn't go up to thirty-four feet.
But if they did.
Twenty-eight feet.
That was why, that was what we implied last, at the last meeting.
Yeah.
It just wasn't fully understood, maybe.
Right, so that, that.
The side is twenty-one.
I think we have the direction on that one.
All right, all right, let's move on.
Okay.
Do you repeat, George, which, just so that we all know?
In my, in my non-planner language.
Because I, yeah. It would remove the one-on-one language, right?
No.
Right.
No.
So in the front, on the image on the left, the twenty-eight-foot sidewall for the front, you could do that at your front setback line and then go one-for-one back up to thirty-four feet. But if you wanted to start at thirty-four feet, you couldn't push that all the way back to that thirty-six-foot line and still, and go up to thirty-four feet, you'd still be stuck at twenty-eight feet.
Twenty-eight feet is the maximum sidewall, and the only way you get to thirty-four feet is with a pitched roof.
Correct.
Or a wedding cake.
Language has to come out then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll make the clarifications, but.
The one.
But the one-to-one is actually still allowable.
All right, let's go.
Because that's what gives you the pitch.
Or you wedding cake.
But you're capping the sidewall at twenty-eight.
Yeah, the wedding cake.
We'll, we'll make that clarification, right?
Do a wedding cake on the side, but not.
You cannot do a wedding cake at the front. Okay, that's what we're saying, yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Clarify this, sidewall's also past twenty-one feet.
Side in the back, yes.
Yeah. Yeah. Both are, both are twenty-one feet.
All right.
George also references columns, and columns are not a defined term. So maybe add a defined term for what a column is.
You run the longest meetings. Couple more items.
Okay. Okay, so this is getting at the rear yard requirement table that I was, when we were talking about the intervals, just shifting this one foot.
Yeah.
Any questions on this? No?
Wait a minute.
It's just a typo. This is the, this is the, this change, the one-foot change.
Okay.
Think we're good on that one, everybody? Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, yeah, don't get, come on, stone eyes, don't tell.
And then I had with the underground parking requirements, correcting that the perimeter restriction should apply to all basement development, not just below-grade parking. And then that begs the question of retitling this section from underground parking requirements to RM ten basement requirements, just to be a little bit more clear. Was there any revisiting of the perimeter?
My, my, well, my question is that, when we talked about the building space, not necessarily the outline of the building. You'd indicated that you were going to touch base with Sally. And and did she have any concerns with going to the buildable area? Probably had some, but.
Well, yeah, because if you go through, if you, if you use the entire buildable area, then with the OSHA cuts.
Right.
That require a safety angled plane to do any sort of excavation, that cut then could impact the trees. And so it could be that clarification is so long as it doesn't trigger a heritage tree removal within the setback area, because heritage tree removals are allowed within the main buildable area.
Right.
So if you want to make sure that we provide consideration for the OSHA cuts, we can add in the clarification that the base, like the cuts for the basement should not interfere with tree preservation.
I think that's.
That are outside of the buildable area.
That are outside of the buildable area.
I think that's a good idea.
Good.
That works.
Yeah.
I think that's.
We want to keep Sally happy.
Can I, can I just raise? I think the first place that this issue comes up is actually under oh-three-oh-C.
What page?
It's page sixteen. The last sentence of of the floor area ratio says habitable basement space and below-grade parking shall not count towards floor area ratio. And and I think what we agreed was that below-grade parking will not count toward floor area ratio. And habitable space that is below grade will not count as floor area ratio if all resident parking is below grade.
Right, a hundred percent of the resident parking is below grade.
So that comes up in C, under floor.
Right, I have C, so can, I was pulling it up while I was listening to you. Can you just go through it one more time?
So you got it. I I didn't realize you had C.
You changed it.
I thought you were into parking, which is.
I I was focusing on parking, but you raised C, so I just want to make sure that we have the language correct there.
Okay, so you're you're addressing where it comes up in C and in floor area.
If you could repeat what you said, though, about what what the intent was with respect to habitable basement space. Re-represent what you said there.
What I said was, yeah, that last sentence in floor area ratio.
Yes.
I I think that what we agreed was below-grade parking will not count towards floor area ratio and habitable basement space will not count toward floor area ratio if all resident parking is below grade.
Yeah.
That's good.
Okay.
That's always been the intent, yes.
Wait.
And that was that second point here that I had on the slide. Clarification that the intent in RM ten is to count habitable basement to the FAR unless all residential parking is provided but below grade. So we'll make sure that's captured here and then we'll make sure that's captured in C.
Right.
Okay.
And and you suggested changing that title from underground parking to just underground.
Yeah, basement and basement's in RM ten. Um, so then I listed out all the areas that we changed in RM twenty and forty. I didn't have anything specific, but I think the conversation that we've had relative to the front setback, or sorry, the the sidewall at the front property line, we'll take a look at how that might be influential here.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Staff report pages, ten and eleven.
And now we're at the staff recommendations.
Okay.
So there are no proposed changes at this point to the discussion and the adoption, or sorry, the adoption of the ISM and D or the MMRP.
Wait, can I ask a question? Sorry.
Sure.
On the RM twenty forty.
Sure.
So is the setback for RM twenty the same as RM ten?
The height standards relative to the forty-five-degree plane were amended to be the same.
So 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 the heights, the height language with the we, that we've just discussed on RM ten is the same for RM twenty?
Yes.
And the setbacks also are the same for RM twenty?
The setbacks are somewhat different because the, it's just a site within the property. And so it's the R1A adjacent setback that will modify to address the forty-five-degree angle.
Okay, so then my other, okay, but but in terms of setbacks for RM twenty, are they the same as RM forty? Or do, I don't think you have separate setbacks for RM twenty.
No, they had, they had those lumped together. I brought that up last time.
No, we have an RM twenty, R1A adjacent sidewall height at least. I think we did something similar for.
No, but the overall setbacks are the same for twenty and forty.
There weren't for the RM forty sites on that campus, there were no R one adjacent.
Right.
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 So the only concern was the RM twenty sites where there were R one adjacent.
Okay.
You're talking about the Menlo School.
I see. So the so the the setback is different because it says where there's an R one adjacent, then it's fifty feet. It sounds like the setback on each side is fifty feet.
Correct, so this is this is what we would be changing, this graphic here.
Okay, what page is that on?
This is on page thirty four.
Thirty four or fifty one.
Thirty four?
I've got page thirty, here's thirty four.
Thirty four.
Yeah, okay. But that's talking about the RM twenty, right?
Yes.
And then.
So would the discussion we just had about RM ten apply to this?
Yes, as well, there's two graphics here. It would apply to this one. And then it would apply to the R one A. Oh, no, sorry, not this one, because it's a twenty one. Sorry, no.
Underneath that, there's an RM twenty, this side.
Yeah, so it's more restricted when it's adjacent to the R one A properties.
Facing adjacent R one property. Twenty one.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
So the front of the R one, RM twenty would, the sidewall wouldn't go past twenty feet, just like we discussed with RM.
Correct.
Okay.
That's the sidewall. Okay, yeah.
So that's all your issues, right?
Yeah.
All right, well, I can look.
Do we need to have motions for each of these? Okay, do you want them separate? One, two, and three? Okay, do I have a a motion for the first one?
As well on all of these, please.
I'm sorry, what are you saying, Mona?
Can we do separate motion and roll call vote on each one?
Why do we need to do roll call?
I don't know, because this is.
She wants it that way.
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt item number one, discuss and adopt the initial study and mitigated negative declaration per IS slash MND and mitigation and monitoring reporting program per MMRP and per for the twenty twenty three dash twenty thirty one housing element and zoning code updates.
I second that.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote. How do we do? She said that.
Councilmember Holland.
Yes.
Mona asked for one.
Okay, let's keep going.
Go fast.
Councilmember DeGolia.
Yeah.
Councilmember Whitmer. Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes, thanks.
Okay. So.
Hey, I'd like to make a motion that we
Number two.
Adopt the amendments to the Atherton General Plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, can we have a roll call, please?
Actually. Well, it's to discuss and adopt the proposed amendments to the Atherton General Plan, including specific revisions to the twenty twenty three slash twenty thirty one Atherton Housing.
I was reading it from the agenda.
Councilmember Holland.
Yes.
Councilmember DeGolia. Councilman Whitmer.
Yep.
Vice Mayor.
Yes.
And Mayor.
Yes.
Thank you. And for the for the third one.
Yes.
We need to give this ordinance a number, so it'll be except for second reading and adopt the ordinance number six, six, nine, amending chapter seventeen of division two of the Atherton Municipal Code and Zoning Act.
Oh, that's somebody else.
Make a motion as what city manager said.
And I second that.
Roll call, please.
Holland.
Yes.
DeGolia. Whitmer.
Yeah.
Lewis.
Yes.
And Manwaleen.
Yes. Are we done?
No, we haven't.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, pickleball. Oh, my gosh.
Oh, that's what you don't have to move off this agenda.
I wanted to take it off. I know, I got vetoed on that.
So.
We're back on pickleball. Okay.
All right, pickleball.
Councilmember Lewis, Councilmember Whitmer, I think Lewis was.
So we're we're going to resume the regular agenda. Item eight, pickleball program at Holbrook Palmer Park, and we have a report by Robert.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. As as directed by the council, we initiated the pickleball trial at Holbrook Palmer Park at the end of January of this year.
Might want to wait a minute.
Can everyone be quiet? We're we're still going here. And go out the door.
We're we're trying.
Yeah.
Brittany, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, also.
Yes, thanks, guys.
You guys work really hard.
You were very verbose tonight, Tom.
He was backup, though. He was backup.
Whispering.
Okay. You received an update in July. I'm sorry. Let's see here. I apologize. You you received an update, I believe, in June with regards to the pickleball trial. We had a survey that was issued out to the public to get feedback on the pickleball trial, how it was going, interest in continuing pickleball at the park at the park. And that trial, sorry, that survey ended at the end of July. The information was aggregated and submitted to the Park and Rec Subcommittee with regards to pickleball. It was also shared with the full committee. The pickleball Subcommittee had some recommendations with regards to the pickleball program. They the determination was that there was sufficient interest in continuing pickleball at the park. That it did not result in a meaningful loss in tennis at the park, the way that it was being operated. They did have some recommendations with regards to changing the pickleball program to increase playtime based on requests for residents. And to include a opportunity for drop in play. Right now, everything is by reservation. So the current program includes the opportunity to reserve court one on either of the two pickleball courts that have been striped on the on the court any morning up until noon and in the evenings on Tuesday and Thursday. The Subcommittee made a presentation to the overall committee at their July meeting. And the recommendation, after deliberation, the full committee made a recommendation to you to continue the shared use of pickleball on Court One. Again, every morning up until noon in the evenings as currently stands on Tuesdays and Thursdays, but they wanted to expand play on Sunday, so make Sunday available for pickleball all day. And they also had a recommendation for making one court reservable and the other court for drop in, available for drop in play.
That's good.
I see a question.
Yeah, I have a question, too.
Yeah. When we were hearing people, some tennis players coming and talking all the time about how much noise it would make and stuff like that. Mention any names, but they all said it was based on the drop in, people just congregating and things like that. So I I was surprised to see drop in there since that was what was cited is what was going to cause all the disruptions and all the noise in that area. So I'm kind of baffled as to how that made the recommendation.
I think it was based on interest expressed. And it, I say, part of that would be dependent on where you expect people to wait to play their turn. It's going to be a little noisier on the tennis courts if you have that congregation inside the court versus outside.
I think we need to consider that because, you know, it's just my two cents. Mr. Rozier and several other people came and wrote and things like that complained that the drop in stuff, especially on the weekend, was where all the noise comes from, the rowdiness, et cetera. And and I think that we should think twice about that. That's my two cents.
Initially, the Subcommittee recommendation was, I believe, just for the afternoon period on one court as opposed to all day on that, on one of the courts for that drop in play. And so at the, we haven't experimented with drop in play, so this would in essence be another trial. And so the again, what we have is a recommendation from the Park and Rec Committee. It's up to you to say you like that recommend, you want to move forward with it or not. Whether that includes drop in play at all or if it's all day or part day, that's up to you.
And drop and drop in also required that they have a key to get in, right?
That's the intent.
How does it work? So anyone with the key can come in and just wait your turn?
Right.
Is it like pool, you put a quarter down or how's it work?
I'm going to say we haven't done drop in play, so right now to make a reservation on the court, you have to have a key.
Okay.
Okay, so.
With the drop in, what happens there?
I'm going to say that.
There was a proposal for a signup sheet or.
Yeah, so there there's a proposal to have a signup sheet to see how active that desire is. I think it's going to be hard to control drop in play in terms of
We don't have drop in.
whether or not they have a key.
Yeah. Well, the door's locked, so somebody in your group's got to have a key, so.
Well, I was going to say that if there are people waiting, they're probably going to open the gate and say.
I don't remember it being that there was the drop in that was the issue. It was all of pickleball was the issue. And I think this ruffians who are making all this loud, rabid noise and laughing and disrupting everyone never materialized. We've had it now for six months. So this was a perception that wasn't a reality, and so I would think our committee who studied it, if they're recommending this, I think we should go with it myself.
There's a member of the committee online.
I was going to say, there's, we have done public comment.
Sorry, sorry, okay. But we were asking questions, I thought.
Do we have, do we have drop in? Like just quickly, do we have drop in for tennis? Or do you have to have a reservation?
I'm going to say that I'm going to use the word drop in differently. So right now, if you have a key and the courts are not in use, you can go in with your key and play. If somebody has a reservation, they have the right to ask you to to not play. When they're talking about drop in play for the pickleball court, what they're talking about is almost an open play type program where where the gate in essence is open for that court and people can cycle through, play with others on during a set period of time.
So they wouldn't have to have a key?
I don't think that, is that right?
It's it's such a, it's so much more social.
So.
It just means you can play together. It doesn't mean, it doesn't mean that the doors open. Someone still has to open the door. We're not going to take the locks off.
The the way it'll end up being is that that door will be unlocked by the first person. It'll be propped open. Just being realistic, that's the way it's going to be.
But how's it different with tennis?
Require, unless you put the seating for that drop in play inside, which will generate that, potentially generate that noise concern.
I have a question. One thing that the staff report said is that the committee recommended a sign in sheet to be provided for drop in play, and the program will be continued through the end of the tennis year.
Yeah, so.
Tennis year.
I'm going to say that that was back in July. We're now in September. When somebody buys a key in February.
Oh, it's the.
They have the key all the way till we change out the locks in January, February. At this point, the weather's going to change. And playtime is going to go back, is going to shrink quite a bit. And so it's up to you whether you want to actually have the program stop in February or just have it continue on until until something changes and you want to change the program.
Glad we did it.
I am, too.
Should we do the public? Public comments, so we're going to make comments and get out of here.
So if nobody has any more questions, we're going to open to public comments.
Walter?
Is somebody online?
It's Walter Robinson.
He raises his hand.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, but.
Okay, thank you for taking this on after a very lengthy discussion, which I heard it all. First, to address Bill's comment. Seventy six percent, seventy four percent of all pickleball players that played in our town want some kind of drop in. Some of them said reservations plus drop in, and that's what we don't. And as far as the noise, the other member of my Subcommittee was the gentleman that Bill referred to. So he's totally in agreement with this. By restricting to one court, our view is that there'll be a limited number of people. And by the way, at least my view as a person here, I think I can speak for the committee, is that people have to have a key. If one person goes in there and stays for an hour and has other people drop in, maybe that'll be fine, but that door's got to be shut. And when that person's done with the key for the hour, I would expect someone else to move in. Robert may be right, but that isn't what the intent is. And the other reason for that is, that is to have this, we dealt with player capital a lot. You may remember this is a real issue. But who uses these tennis courts, the fact that they were donated only for tennis? So we tried to reach an intermediate ground here, which is to have the shared court still. Most pickleball players want to take over the whole court. Most tennis players don't want them on that court at all. They want them to have to go build a separate court. So this is the compromise. And the trial, this was a September report, so that's why we said through the tennis year, because we wanted people who sign up next year to know what the rules are. And so that's why we said we'll try for three or four months, and then we'll know those the rules and whether people can do that. I think the time is sufficiently late now that we would probably suggest we run this the rest of next year as well. So anyway, that's that's the way we reached this. I looked at every person who had reserved a court. I ran all the surveys to eight different ways so we could know who did this and when and why. And as I say, we tried best we could to to mimic what the views are of the town here. So there was an effort, Mr. Whitmer, exactly, other people who played pickleball would like to take over the court permanently and have open all the time. And we did look at noise. We had the police compliance officer come out. We measured it. I used a measurement as well. And the problem is, of course, pickleball sound is not measured like the loud music next door. So anyway, the answer to that is, yes, we considered that. We think as in the report you have, which is my PowerPoint at the end, it says we will monitor that for both noise factors, i.e. the crowd noise as well as the noise of pickleball. You may remember the last point that the circus club, although they measured exactly like we did within compliance, they ended up having threats of lawsuits and had to move. We're very interested in what the neighbors said, and there have been no complaints so far, and that's been one of our major tests. Has anybody complained? We're now up to about a hundred and seventeen hours a month of pickleball. And yet, we, even the tennis players and player capital, Michael has said, it's not a problem. We have baffling out there. So anyway, that's the conclusion on noise.
Okay, excellent.
Thanks, Walt.
Thank you.
So you closing public comment?
Yes, there's nobody else, right, Anthony?
No.
No one else? Okay, closing public comment, go on.
So I think that this pickleball trial has been very successful. And and I think that exactly what Walt said about no noise complaints is very significant. And I I I think there's been no. And I, I, I think there's uh, been no problem with the neighbors. Uh, there was some concern about court, using court one, it doesn't look like that's come to be a problem. The pickleball players haven't overwhelmed that court, there've been plenty of openings, especially in the afternoons. Um, I do think that there's a problem in managing how we would do open play. Uh, but I think that what Robert said about the way tennis players can do open play is right, that if somebody shows up with who's a tennis player, that they're going to have a key, and nobody's on a court, they can walk in and play. And if somebody shows up who's reserved it, then they either move to another court or they work it out. I think the same thing should be true for pickleball. So if somebody shows up to play pickleball and nobody's on that shared court, they can go in and play. But I don't think we should formally create a open play time, because you're going to end up with uh, creating more potential conflict than is necessary. And we can encourage them to, you know, if they would come by and, and they've got a key, they can go in and play. Um, I also think we should let it not, not end it at the end of the tennis year, I think it should just be, we're opening it up, we're going to share the court, and, and like the committee said, that if somebody comes up with a donation to put a pickleball court somewhere else in the park, we can then consider that, and I, I think that would be fine.
To pick the Gilmore House.
To Gilmore House, the obvious place is the handball court. So I would move that we approve it with those two changes.
Yeah, uh, just my comment, I, I think that we, we need to keep the restriction that you have to have a key to play. Um, and I think Walt more or less agreed with that in his comments. Um, and I think that we're opening up to pickleball, we, pickleball should just be a permanent thing, not, you know, we're going to go for another three months, or we're going to go for another eighteen months, you know, people want to play pickleball. If it becomes a problem, then we'll have to figure out what we're going to do from there, but I think we should just say, we have the one court for pickleball, and that's it. Um, but, but to play, same as with tennis, yeah, yeah, but to play, you have to have a key, you know?
Okay, so just two points of clarification, thank, thank you, um, Councilmember Woodmer. My, my concern is really next year's key sale. If you're selling a key for next year and you're saying that pickleball is available, we need to make sure that it's available for that entire period of time.
Yeah, that's why it's continuing.
And so it sounds like it's going to be a continue on. Um, and then the other item is related to player capital and not having them do, quote-unquote, lessons during the reservable pickleball hours. They're welcome to provide lessons, but I think that we don't want to take away from uh, public usage.
Do they offer pickleball lessons?
Uh, as demand increases, the answer is yes.
Okay.
Um, I think they've offered a few lessons. Um, and so it's uh, I think they're seeing the rise, I think, in the staff report, you'll see that we actually had a pretty much a fifty percent increase in key sales from last year. Um, I'm not going to say it's all attributable to pickleball, but there's certainly interest in it that the key sales went up from about a hundred to over a hundred and fifty.
Yeah, fifty percent increase.
Yeah, so. Um, and then just a confirmation, um, so all day Sunday?
Yeah.
Is the recommendation? Um, and no open play? Okay.
We have a motion by Councilmember DeGolia, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right.
Okay, motion to adjourn.
Turn.